Last December 14, 2021, this committee by virtue of the privileged speech of this representation as well as Senate Resolution Number 922 filed by Senator Francis Pagalinan called for a hearing to discuss the issue on smuggling of agricultural products and assessment issues in the Bureau of Customs that really affect the livelihood of our farmers and the stakeholders even from the trucking sector. Before I continue with my opening statement, I would just like to acknowledge the presence of the following senators attending both physically and virtually. We have the Vice Chair appointed by the Chair, Senator Papilio Ping Laxon, and then Senator Coco Pimentel. And also, virtually present are Senators Imi Marcos, Francis Pagalinan, Cynthia Villar, Francis Tolentino, and the Minority Leader, Senator Frapulon. We will announce the presence of the unders as soon as they log in. As we continue our discussions today, we will look further on the issues that were divulged during our first hearing. Apparently, aside from the main subject matter on smuggling of fruits and vegetables, revelations were made on the rampant or derampancy of smuggling fruits, vegetables, and other agricultural products like pork, fish, chicken, rice, and sugar. Agapartylist representatives revealed that in the hog meat alone, the country lost 7.6 billion in tariffs every year due to misdeclaration or technical smuggling. As aptly raised during the previous hearing, these smuggled agricultural products do not undergo testing for diseases, which not only can infect livestock and humans, but if not so, it can lead to the end or destruction of our local farms and products. Or worse, continuous smuggling can result to another pandemic. Aside from what has been mentioned, the committee also heard the observed inconsistencies on the importation records of agricultural products between the Bureau of Customs and the Department of Agriculture, which implies irregularities. To make things worse, efforts made in conducting some of the operations against smugglers were put to naught as cases have not yet been filed. What are the BOC and the DA doing about these inconsistencies? Well, we hope that this time around, the representative of the Department of Justice will not be ready with the data or the data of cases filed, particularly the conviction and dismissal rates. On a similar vein, why some inspections or seizures done have not resulted to any case yet? We hope to have a clear explanation from the concerned agencies why up to now, charges have not been filed against some of those who have been caught smuggling as a result of government operations. Apart from the government's revenue losses, we need to underscore the difficulties encountered by our local farmers who have been competing directly with the influx of cheaper vegetable and fruit products, which is the main reason why this hearing has been called. The committee learned during the last hearing that aside from smuggling, the indiscriminate grant of authority by the Bureau of Plant Industry to import fruits and vegetables from other Asian countries makes things worse for the farmers in Benguet and the other parts of the country. The committee will also look into the recommendations of the Bureau of Customs to strengthen their efforts in combating smuggling operations like intel agency collaboration, additional manpower, and improvement in its law enforcement. This is because smuggling is not only a problem in customs but in border control as well. While this representation believes, well, based on the statements previously delivered and position papers submitted to this committee, that efforts are being made to put an end to the persistent cause of misery of our farmers. The relentless smuggling clearly shows that there is still a lot to be desired, a lot more. And this is the primary reason why this hearing has been conducted to begin with. We should not let the smugglers keep up with the efforts that we are making in order to stop them. We must do more. Let us continue with what we have started to get plausible answers from our resource persons that will eventually help us in coming up with sound recommendations to this perennial problem. So before we start, we would like to welcome back our previous resource persons as well as our new invitees, both from the DTI and DFA upon the recommendation of the sum of the committee members during the previous hearing. May we request the committee secretary to acknowledge our resource persons in attendance for the record and thereafter administer the oath to the resource persons attending the sitting for the first time and also those who guessed who have not taken their vote yet.
Yes, I'm the chair. Before our ask today, I would like to acknowledge the presence of Yusek Waldo Arcarpio, Undersecretary for Special Concerns, virtually present from the Department of Agriculture. Together with him is Aseck Federico Laciste Junior attending physically. From the Department of Foreign Affairs, we have Aseck Gina Hamoralin of the Office of Undersecretary for Multilateral Affairs and International Economic Relations. From the Department of Justice, we have Attorney Charlie Guhit, Senior Assistant State Prosecutor, Office of the Prosecutor General, National Prosecution of Service. Then we have Attorney Ferdinand Fernandez, Senior Assistant State Prosecutor, and Attorney Lover Tikit Jeffy Villiordan, Assistant State Prosecutor. From the Department of Trade and Industry, we have Yusek Ruth Castello attending physically, and Aseck Alan Gepti also attending physically. From the Bureau of Customs, we have Attorney Vincent Maronilia. He is the Assistant Quisher of the BOC, he is attending physically. Together with him is Collector Marites T. Martin. Also from the BOC, the Chief Law Division, Attorney Willy Sarbiento. Mr. Daniel Toralba of the BOC Port of Subic. From the Agapartylist, we have the Honorable Representative Rico B. Heron, who is also attending physically. From Tasangguyang Panaliwikanang Benguet, we have Honorable Ruben I. Pauad attending physically. He is the chairperson of Tasangguyang Panaliwikanang Benguet Committee on Agriculture. Together with him is Honorable Robert Namoro, attending physically. He is the Vice Chair of Tasangguyang Panaliwikanang Benguet Committee on Agriculture. Then we have from the League of Association at Latinidad Vegetable Trading Areas, we have Ms. Agot Malonoy attending virtually. Then we have from the United Broiler Racer Association or UBRa, we have its president, Attorney Elia Jose Insho attending physically. Then we have from the Federation of Free Farmers or Workers, we have Mr. Raoul Montemayor attending virtually. From the Samahang Industria ng Agrikultura Sinag, we have the chairperson, engineer Rosendozo attending virtually. On the National Federation of Hog Farmers, Mr. Chester Warentan attending virtually. And Mr. Alfred Nang, the Vice Chair. And lastly, we have from the Allianza Agrikultura, Dr. Ernesto Ordones attending virtually. May we request all our resource person who have not taken their oath yet to please raise please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this inquiry of the committee of the whole? Thank you. For the record, Mr. Chair, all our resource persons replied in affirmative.
Thank you, committee secretary. If there is no other member who wish to give this or her opening statement, I would like to give the floor to Ms. Agot Valanoy from the League of Associations of Latinidad Vegetable Trading Areas for their presentation.
Good morning, sir. Let me just open my file.
Will that take long, Ms. Valanoy? Anyway, while waiting, just for the record, the Chair of the Committee on Agriculture, Senator Cynthia Villar is very much interested also in what's happening. She is present? Right, already, go ahead.
Okay, sir. I hope everybody can see the presentation.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Our presentation is a background of the E2 and an update of what has been going on for the past few months until yesterday. Before anything else... Before anything else, I just would like to establish the... the how huge the vegetable, the Benguet vegetable industry is and how important it is to the province and to the country. Our vegetable industry actually is very wide in coverage. We supply the whole country. On the north side of the Philippines, we go as, we supply as far as Batanas and in the south, we supply as far as General Santos City and Palawan. Ganyan po kalawak 'yung binibigan, binidistributan ng gulay po namin. So we supply sixty to seventy percent of the country's needs of the semi-tempered vegetables. According to the Department of Agriculture, year 2012, the vegetable industry of Benguet is worth fourteen billion. At an average, we distribute one point five million kilograms per day of assorted vegetables to all the key markets in the country. Pag kami po ay nagoversupply, we reach as far as three point three million kilos every day. Kaya malaki po ang problema namin dahil dito sa vegetable smuggling kasi ganun nga po, our economy in Benguet is actually anchored largely to agriculture. So for vegetable smuggling, we started complaining. As a backgrounder, we just would like to establish our claim that smuggling never stopped at all. So we started complaining last year July and August, but the Department of Agriculture denied that there is smuggling or there are vegetables coming from China entering our market. So after they officially claimed that, we made our own research and we posted our research, the result of our research. So if you could look at the screen, I have encircled there the dates where we posted our... where we posted our documentation. So monthly, it started with August, September, October, November. And then na po 'yung dates, nandyan na rin po 'yung mga area kung saan nakuha po namin 'yung mga picture. And of course, nung December po, after po nung first Senate hearing natin, natigil po ng konti for a while, the smuggling stopped. The distribution of the smuggled carrots stops for a while sa mga key markets natin. But on December twenty-four, nagsilabasan na naman po uli. So January, we still posted because it never stopped at all, as I have made mention. And then February, ganyan pa rin po, marami pa rin po, ang naglilipa na sa mga markets po natin. And despite all of those claims that there are confiscations that are being conducted by the agencies. And of course, I remind you for the Korean strawberries that we discussed last time, we posted that on the month of December. And this is the document that I failed to show you last time, the permit that was given to the imported Korean strawberries, which is ornamental plants. And we have made mention that strawberries are not ornamental plants. So still, that's still some kind of smuggling because it is misdeclaration. So this is the, because some of us or some of the people are asking that maybe this smuggling or these imported vegetables are actually a result of the G A W T O or the ASEAN Free Trade Agreement. So this is the list of the products that are allowed to enter our country from China. And we see no fresh carrots of naga-unload kahit a broad daylight. So these are the text messages coming from our informers and our members from Procy Market, further validating the distribution of many smuggled carrots in Procy Market also. So I would like to focus more on the effects of smuggling to us farmers here and to the vegetable industry of Benguet in itself. So starting last year, the decline of our purchase or of our orders coming from the different markets, key markets, declined from twenty to forty percent. So last year, twenty percent lang, but this year, because the volume of the smuggled carrots doubled, nagdoble na rin po 'yung decrease ng order. So the monetary value of this percentage at an average is equivalent to two point five million pesos per day, which is a loss on the part of the farmers. Ito po 'yung price monitor that we had since this smuggling problem started. So last year, from August to December twenty-twenty-one, big, the carrots, big size, eto na po 'yung ano, 'yung classification po nila. The lowest that we have monitored so far is seven pesos per kilo to ninety-five pesos per kilo. Why do we have a ninety-five pesos per kilo? Nagkaroon lang po ng ganyang kataas na presyo pag wala po 'yung mga smuggled na mga carrots. Pag seven po 'yung presyo, that means that there are a lot of smuggled carrots that are being sold in the market. The medium-sized carrots, if you look at the data, we have placed there zero to fifty. Zero pesos to fifty pesos, zero po kasi if you have seen social, the social media that are being posted in the social media, there are cases wherein the farmers are giving away their produce as reliefs or they throw it away in the farm or even, kahit pa nga sa roadside, binabasura na nila eh. So this year, from January to present, big-sized carrots priced as low as seven pesos and as high as sixty-five pesos per kilo. That is the wholesale price here in Latinidad, all of the vegetable trading areas here. And medium-sized carrots ranges to zero to thirty-five pesos per kilo. So these are another effect of the smuggling. There are a lot of unsold local or Benguet carrots in the markets because they prefer the, our consumers or our buyers there in the end market prefer to buy the smuggled carrots coming from China. Mainly because according to the consumers, the China carrots can be stored for two months and it will not be destroyed, while our Benguet carrots are easily destroyed within two to three days. So these are the proofs that there are a lot of local carrots that are being dumped. This is in Procy Market Saraya, Quezon. This is also in Divisoria. Our traders there are also complaining that the carrots that they bought here were not sold. And the effect of that to the farmers here, if the buyers were not able to sell their carrots, they will not be able to pay these carrots that they hold from here because our vegetables are most often than not being given in a credit-based system. So if they will not be able to, pag itipon lang namin 'yung mga carrots po namin dyan, hindi rin po sila makakabayad dito sa amin. And of course, it will all, it will still boil down to the expense, at the expense of the farmer. So here are proof of pictures posted by our colleagues in the social media, carrots that are being given away by tons. That's last year, this month. This month, eto po 'yung mga nabasura, nabigay po as relief, being given away for free. But the cost of production of carrots at the moment, especially that the farming puts has already, prices of the farming puts has already increased, it's already twenty-five pesos per kilo. So you can just imagine the farmer giving away carrots that were spent with twenty-five pesos per kilo as cost of production. Even the big carrots that are in, lower in quality, if you look at the picture on the right side, that is actually five tons in total. It was just given away for relief because it was not bought because the buyers opted to buy the smuggled carrots. So far, these are the actions that we have gathered against smuggling. First and foremost, of course, the resolution coming from our Sangunyang Pandalawigan officials, asking the Senate for the investigation. The Department of Agriculture Cordillera, who has been reporting all of our reports to the National Office, the City Council of Pagyo passing a resolution denouncing vegetable smuggling. And these are the operations and actions done by the Bureau of Customs, which we only gathered through news press releases because as of now, as until now, they haven't answered our first letter that we have sent before. And of course, the investigation here, the Senate. Well, this slide, if you could look at this slide, we do not know if this is really an action or inaction. Our caretaker claimed that he filed a probe in the Congress or before the Congress last year, October, this was the month of October. But we do not know if he really filed because there is no invitation for investigation. We haven't heard of any investigation in the Congress. It's only the Senate that is conducting an investigation. And well, if we look at our, the news, his name, our caretaker here, his name came out on the articles, him being identified as one of the smugglers. So we really do not know if his action of filing an investigation before the Congress is really true or not. We have been asking for a copy of the filed, of that paper that he filed, but he never gave us any proof that he did really file a sort of a request for investigation. Even our governor here, which is a, which is the sparring partner of our caretaker, we, I'm sorry to say, but there is no action that we got from this governor that we have here. Of course, Phil Rick also, the party list, has filed in the Congress. We are still waiting for the result. And of course, Senator Pamela, who visited us last time, he wrote to Secretary Dar for a dialogue between the stakeholders and the D A and B P I, which we conducted last March nineteen. So this was the dialogue with B P I Director Kulaste and Asec, D A Asec Laciste. So this is the picture. That would be all for the presentation.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Valanoi. Isa sa mga dapat malaman ng mga kababayan natin, 'yung mga carrots na galing sa abroad or imported or smuggled, usually smuggled. Kaya ang tumatagal ng dalawa niyo, eh, may kamotyon. Dapat malaman ang mga kababayan natin na masama sa katawan ng tao, yun. Eh, hindi nila dapat pinipili. Eh, I won't be surprised kung formalin pa ang nakalagay dun, ang nakasaksak dun eh. Anyway, as for the order of questioning, as been followed by the committee from the start, first will, who will ask will be, their respective questions are those who are physically present. Next are the Senate officers and then followed by the members who are virtually present only the order of their arrival and login. May I just get an update first? What are the B O C and the Department of Agriculture doing about the reports of the inconsistencies in the importation of agricultural products? Maybe here from the Bureau of Customs?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the honorable members of the Senate. Mr. President, we've actually had some coordination meetings with the Department of Agriculture. As for the Bureau of Customs, our data is based on actual import volumes and we want to verify with the Department of Agriculture if the same is the basis for the data they presented or is it based from actual import permits that was issued, but disregarded whether these import permits were actually used. But as far as the Bureau is concerned, Mr. President, these are datas coming from actual importations and we think there lies the discrepancy. I think the Department of Agriculture is basing their numbers on the actual permits, volume in the permits that was issued, not on the actual importation.
Uh, okay. Can you comment on that, Department of Agriculture, Asec Laciste?
Sir, pertaining to that, sir, in the discrepancy, hindi pa po, kasi iscentralized ang database po namin. Wala po tayong way of monitoring po kung ilan po talaga 'yung dumadating at saka as per contrast sa issued po na mga S P S sa H C po.
And what are we doing about it?
Sir, right now, sir, that's why one of the recommendations namin po is to have a fully automated trade transactions po and monitoring po. Pagka meron na po tayong automation, not only on centralized database but also on import processes, export processes, request for inspection, mammoniton na po natin.
Ang matagal na pinipilit ni Senator Laxen ya, 'yung digitalization of Bureau of Customs. Saan ang nangyari sa digitalization, Bureau of Customs? Automation, automation?
Uh, Mr. President, we've ventured into some projects automating some of our processes. But the major automation project that we're venturing into is the Philippine Customs Modernization Project, which is funded by the World Bank. At this point, initial procurement of the initial stage of the Philippine Customs Modernization Project, which is this procurement of the P S Q A or the Quality Assurance Advisors, is already underway. Hopefully after that, we will be able to start with the procurement process of the Customs Processing System, which will replace our current system and will modernize it at par with the others, other international standards, together with the World Bank, Mr. President.
Bakit naman sam? Why not all?
The CPS, Mr. President, will cover the entire Customs Processing System, but pending the realization of the Customs Processing System under the World Bank project, we have also ventured into modernizing some of our existing processes already. So once the Customs Processing System is complete, that will integrate a full automation already of the entire Customs Processing System. For now, we've automated our actiran system in terms of actually activating the customer portal system, wherein hindi na po kailangan magpunta 'yung mga transacting publics of Bureau of Customs. Mag-online na lang po sila, sasubmit na nila online 'yung mga requirements nila and there will be a thread online din po sa conversation with our examiners and appraisers. So that meron pong auditing system dun sa kada transaction po, online na ginagamit. So isa po yun sa innovation naming ginawa, meron din po kaming e-track system kung saan tinatrak po namin 'yung mga duty-free shipments and shipments going to the peso zones and the customs bonded warehouses via GPS, automated din po yun. And we've done some upgrading on our current E two M systems. These are in preparations po dun sa pagre-revised fully nung aming Customs Processing System through the World Bank project.
Alright. I'll just go back a little to the statements that you just made and also the Department of Agriculture. If I recall it right, you said, or the D A said, you base it on the import permits granted, kayo yan? The data on actual volume of importation?
Data, sir, on actual volume, sir? Meron, sir, kami, pero hindi pa po naiba-balance po as against po talaga sa, dun sa data po ng B O C. Ang nangyayari po is behind po ang mga monitoring po natin at saka pagbalancing po.
Eh, hindi pa kayo 'yung second border inspection?
Yes, sir. Sa amin po, bat just the same po, after po nung second border inspection po, eh, nasa F S R A lang po 'yung mga data po, wala po kaming centralized database po for that.
President, Mr. Chairman, just to pursue the point of modernization, 'yung C M T A, this was enacted in twenty sixteen. And I recall during the budget deliberation in twenty eighteen, committee hearing ito ng, uh, budget ng Department of Finance, and I asked the Bureau of Customs, how much would you need to fully automate? I remember the response was fifteen billion pesos at that time, huh? And I volunteered, maghahanap ako ng budget para lang kayo makapagfully automate, but you seemed not interested, uh, at that time. So hanggang ngayon, it's already twenty twenty-two, hindi pa rin kayo napag-start mag-automate. Sabi mo, Sam. So, ano po talaga, gusto niyo mag-automate? Kasi batas ito, customs modernization and tariff act, di ba? Ang kasama rito, computerized and automate. It's been six years. Kasi tandan, tandan ako ito, tinanong ko, magkanong kailangan ninyo, hahanap ako na maiaugment sa budget ninyo para mag-automate na kayo. This was in twenty eighteen. But I did not get any positive reaction from, uh, I don't know if it was you or another, uh, Depcom, because at that time, I remember si Customs Commissioner was out of the country. So he was represented by, uh, one or two Depcoms. Bakit hindi ka interesado mag-automate? Nagoffer na nga po na maghahanap ako ng, uh, ng pagkukunan para ma-augment 'yung budget for automation, for full automation. That's, that's only my question, Mr. President.
And what is the answer?
Sir, we're, uh, actually, I don't know the details, sir, of, uh, that particular response. I wasn't the Deputy Commissioner who attended. But, uh, from then on, sir, we actually ventured into a lot of modernization projects also independently and, uh, we will provide the Honorable Senator of, uh, these, this mo- modernization efforts that we made to automate, uh, a lot of our processes. Um, but 'yung pinakamalaking automation, uh, project po namin, we did it through the World Bank. May funding naman po na counterpart na binigay po sa amin. Yun lang po, uh, meron din pong part noong modernization project na yun, na loan coming from the World Bank. And, uh, this particular project is also being guided through the procurement process and the quality assurance from the World Bank. So, um, once this is complete, sir, 'yung full automation po ng Bureau of Customs will be achieved through the total revamp of our customs processing system.
Uh, well, we hope and pray that that happens. Kasi basa'to nung delete talaga yun, automation ninyo. Anyway, uh, balik ako yun, ano, hindi ako nalilinawan pa eh. Sabi ng BOC, there is an actual import volume, meron kayo, actual import volume. At sabi ng DA, import permits granted, dun yun binibase. Uh, eh, i-explikan niyo nga sa akin yun na...
Uh, pertaining to import permit, sir, meron, sir, kami mga issued, sir, and approved na import permit as against, sir, dun sa arrival, sir. Hindi pa po, sir, talaga nagbabalance yun, sir, because, uh...
Bakit hindi nagbabalance sa second?
Sir, uh, hindi naman, sir, po, even if may issued po kami nga import permit, sir, hindi naman po 'yung buong inisyo, sir, ang dumadating, sir.
So hindi niyo talaga, hindi niyo alam kung anong actual volume, you know, of importation?
Uh, sir, meron, sir, kami, issued mga quota, sir, at issued permit, but hindi po ginagamit po, sir, ng importer yun, hindi po, sir, nila napaparating ng buo.
Eh, kahit na dapat, dito, meron ang, uh, Bureau of Customs, no? Alam nila 'yung actual volume of importation? Attorney Malonilla?
'Yung actual volume po, sir, 'yung aming, uh, na-capture, sir. Meron din po kami, 'yung ginagamit po kasi nilang, uh, permit na pinapakita sa amin, ipinapangga po namin yun dun sa actual import volume. So when we're asked, kung ilan po talaga 'yung tumating, what we give is the actual import volume na talaga pong na-process at na-release po sa Bureau of Customs. Um, yun, yun pong number, volume po na, actual volume na pinayagan po, uh, ng Department of Agriculture. Si DA lang po 'yung meron nun, sir. Uh, it, it might be bigger because madalaso, hindi naman po, 'yung iba po na nabibigyan ng import volume, hindi po nila na co-consume 'yung actual import volume na binigay po sa kanila sa permit. Uh, meron pong lulutang. Kaya po minsan, kapag nanghihingi po ng data from DA and, uh, 'yung pinaka-afffect na available data sa kanila is per volume based on import permit issued, uh, hindi po nagtutugma dun sa actual import volume na pumasok sa Bureau of Customs.
Reaction?
Mr. President, uh, kasi po 'yung, uh, ang hindi po natin nakukuha is 'yung real, real, in-real time, sir, na record, sir. Kasi even may itong araw, sir, na'to, ganito, sir, ang tumating, 'yung pag-Senate namin, sir, nag-balance, sir, kami, after two days, nag-iba na naman, sir, yun, kaya hindi ka, sir, kasi automated, sir. Kung, ang idea lang po, sir, kung automated na po siya, ma-in real time, sir, makikita po natin lahat.
Senator Villar, you've been raising your hand, good. And then Senator Pangilinan. Uh, nakamute ka, Senator Sinja?
I just want, am I okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I just want to ask DA, how can you issue import permit when you don't know what have arrived and what haven't arrived? Because that should be a basis, di ba? Kasi medyo marami kayo inisyo 'yung import permit kung hindi naman dumarating or dum- dumating na, that should be the basis of the next import permit. Bakit mangyayari na hindi niyo alam kung alin ang dumating at hindi dumating?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, actually, sir, ma'am, uh, we can monitor, ma'am, 'yung, uh, arrival, but hindi po in-real time po na itong day na'to, ito po 'yung alam namin. Uh, what we're saying, sir, ma'am, is that, uh, meron po kami monitoring, ito po 'yung naisyo po namin na permit, ito lang po ang mga tumating, pero after the fact na po 'yung after the, sa timeline lang po. Pero 'yung real time po, kunyari po, ngayon, tanungin niyo ako kung ilan ang tumating na, eh, kukuha pa lang ako ng record, sir, bago ko masabi sa inyo.
Itong nag-i-issue ng import permit. You can require those whom you have issued the import permit to tell you what have arrived every day and what haven't arrived. Kasi kung ako hindi sila susunod sa akin na magre-report sa akin, hindi ko na sila i-issue na import permit. Uh, you can require that, so you will know.
Okay po.
Ganun nga po, ma'am, uh, nangyayari po, after, every after request lang po, hindi po 'yung real time na...
You have to tell them to give you real time arrival. Kasi you can enforce that because you are issuing import permit. Kung ayaw nila sumunod, di wag mo na silang issuehan in the future. I mean, parang hindi excuse yun eh. Parang ayaw niyo talaga malaman na kung ano ang dumating at hindi dumating. Kasi ko, ako ang nagmamanager niyan, hindi sila pwedeng hindi susunod sa akin kasi hindi ko na sila i-issue na import permit in the future.
Senator Pangilinan, good.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, sususugan ko lang, 'yung napanggit ni, uh, Chair Ban Villar, ang agri committee, Senator Villar. Uh, kung hindi ninyo alam 'yung real time, hindi, hindi niyo rin alam kung gusto mo obra na 'yung kadilang import?
Oh, yun nga.
Sa permit?
How can you decide?
Wala kayong, wala kayong real time information, so pwede rin, dahil wala kayong real time information, hindi niyo na alam kung sobra-sobra na 'yung pumasok. Number one. Number two, I, I agree with Senator Villar. Uh, na, you can actually revoke the permit kung hindi sumusunod. While it's true, you can refuse to issue a second permit. Pag hindi sila sumusunod sa pakakaranin niyo, i-revoke niyo 'yung permit. Di ba? Uh, o ayaw talagang malaman kung ano 'yung pumapasok, kasi kailangan nakatingin sa, you know, looking the other way habang pasok ng pasok 'yung, 'yung mga hindi documented na mga, uh, produktong imported. And number two, Mr. President, just, just for the record, we asked for the presence of the DT, BPI Director in the last hearing. Kasi iba 'yung sinasabi nung Assistant Director, iba naman 'yung public statement nung Director. 'Yung BPI ang nag-i-issue kasi nung mga permit na ito eh. Itong, uh, five-to and sunny, uh, siteo and funny, uh, five-to sanitary permits, but tapos wala rito, tapos magtuturuan sila, tapos tayo sa Senado. Eh, parang pinag-iikot-ikutan tayo ng mga ito, Mr. President?
Maybe as the committee secretary on, uh, the response of the invitation?
Uh, Bureau of?
Bureau of?
BPI.
Perfect, ano sabi? Is any representative of the BPI here?
Sir, ask for the secretariat. Uh, the Department of Agriculture did not send any representative from, uh, BPI.
And who is head of the invitation? Who is head, who is head of the BPI, uh, ASEC, uh, Asiste?
Director George Kulaste, Mr. President.
The record, George?
Kulaste.
Kulaste?
Kulaste. C-U-L-A-S-T-E.
Alright, and, um, that is the reason that he cannot come, ASEC, uh, Asiste. Can you try and get in touch with them and, uh, log in virtually?
Mr. President, for info, lahat, sir, po ng, uh, USEC, uh, SEC Director po and, uh, sila secretary po, eh, nasa ilo-ilo ngayon because of the, uh, mankumpo. Uh, starting today, that's why ako po ang na, na putusa na pumunta po rito.
But they can go online.
Yes, uh, get in touch with them, uh, ASEC, uh, Asiste. Tell them to, uh, log in online.
Well done.
We will, uh, go back to Senator Pangilinan later. Senator, yes, um, Plusendo, um, Mr. So?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, sa batas, no, 'yung, 'yung field safety act, uh, nauuna ang, ano, ang DA dun sa, ano, Bureau Quarantine, nauuna ang quarantine before custom. Sa mga hearing na inattend namin sa Committee on Agriculture sa Senado, sa Kongreso, uh, inahamin ang DA na, ano, pupunta sila doon, doon sa first, uh, border, kinukuha nila 'yung data nila, at sine-check doon sa custom kung ilan pumasok, tapos, uh, uh, isaseal nila, ilalabas sa second border. Ilig sabihin, alam na nila kung ilan ang pumasok doon sa first border. So ngayon, uh, iba na naman sinasabi nila na hindi nilala. Uh, apagka binase natin doon sa, doon sa record ng pumapasok na pork, no, uh, and chicken, may monthly silang binibigay sa mga, sa producers na ito ang pumapasok. Ilig sabihin, may record talaga. And, uh, and kung titignan natin, may record ang DA monthly na nilalabas. So, hindi totoo 'yung sinasabi nila na based on SPS issued lang. Kasi 'yung based of, kung, kung based on SP issue, malaki talaga, no? Pero 'yung arrival, may record talaga sila. Upon na arrival of the shipment, may quarantine na nasa Bureau of Custom na nagche-check kung ilan ang pumapasok. So, I, I think, masagot din ng Bureau of Custom, yun, no? Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, ang tinatakarin namin, bakit sa record ng custom and DA walang pumasok na carrots? Pero dito sa UN record, may pumasok, 'yung United Country Record, may pumasok na twelve million kilos na carrots. Uh, uh, Country Report, no? Uh, and, and makikita lang natin dito na talagang talamak 'yung smuggled na pumapasok dahil record ng, uh, Country Record, United Nations Country Record, may pumasok na carrots. And other, sa rise din, no, almost ang difference Yan, Bureau of Custom tsaka ang, uh, DA is, uh, mas malaki 'yung custom ng, uh, three hundred thousand. Atwa, at three hundred million kilos, three hundred million kilos. Same with two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. Uh, may three hundred million kilos na difference ya, uh, sa rise. And kung, 'yung sinabit namin sa Senate din, uh, hindi lang natuloy, natuloy last time 'yung hearing, dun sa, dun sa Port Cut naman, ang nakita natin dun sa record ng imported, uh, coming from Country is hundred nineteen point three million kilos. Sa BOC is seventy-three million kilos, so forty-five million kilos ang difference ya, no? Dun sa, uh, OPAL, sa, sa United Nations Country Record, hundred nineteen million kilos, sa BOC, one oh five billion kilos. So, around thirteen million kilos ang difference ya, no? Sa chicken, uh, sa chicken naman, ang nakita namin is, uh, sa, uh, United Nations Country Record is three hundred twenty-six. Sa Bureau of, uh, sa Bureau Animal Industry is four oh two, no, million kilos. So may difference na seventy-six million kilos. Uh, pag titignan natin 'yung, uh, onions, one oh seven million kilos ang Country Record, ang BOC Record is eighty-four billion kilos. So twenty, twenty-three million kilos ang difference ya. So ilig sabihin, may, may record tayong makukuha and, uh, hindi nagtutugma talaga 'yung pagpasok, no? Uh, 'yung, 'yung nakakataka lang, 'yung vegetable is, uh, talagang, uh, twelve million kilos ang, ang total. Kasi, kasi wala tayong pinapasok, pero dun sa record may pumasok, yun lang, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, uh, it boils down again to, uh, Kasondo, ano, it boils down again to the automation issue of Senator Rason eh. Dalit yan, fully automated, automated 'yung mga nakikita mo na yan eh. Di ba? So, tama lahat ang lista. Pagdating dito sa atin, hindi. Anyway, uh, Attorney Gohit, Attorney Fernandez, Attorney Villar, Villaron, you're all monitoring what's happening. Uh, the Department of Justice should, uh, really, uh, look into all this, ano? Uh, makita natin kung sino dapat mangmanagot dito. Anyway, uh, I'm just finishing up two or three points, you know? Um, then we will go back to the, the sequence of, uh, of, uh, the members of the Senate who will ask their questions. I just want to straighten out some issues that were taken up during the last committee hearing eh. Uh, isa dito, yun nga eh, binagat natin ni, ano, no? And then, um, unless you have, you want a reaction to, to, uh, what transpired, uh, Mr. ASEC, uh, Asiste? So, sinabi nila, Kasondo? Uh, alright, now, uh, what is the reason why, um, inspections or operations done by these government agencies have not resulted into any filing of the cases yet? There are. Attorney Malonilla?
Sir, sa record po namin, nag-file naman po kami ng mga kaso. Uh, meron po kami sinadmit sa, sa Senate, sir, ng mga cases that we filed from two thousand nineteen up to two thousand and, uh, twenty-two po yata.
Correct, I'm holding it, anyway, kaya ako tinatanong. It's because as of September one, twenty twenty-one, sa Port of Subic, uh, twenty-nine reefer containers, ang laman, red onions, ano, um... Kasama ito dun sa mga sinasabi ninyo na dapat kasuhan, ito, wala pa kayong pina-file dito. Ito, maliwaw yun, iba, signed prosecutors, uh, alak maliwanag, sinabi mga charged. Pero meron kayong mga hindi, isa yan, no? Pero pang, itong, uh, sa North Bay, Biffel Storage Facilities with a total of thirty-one cold storage rooms. Tignan niyo sabi, sinapit din niyo sa amin, ano? Wala rin, wala mga charges. Forty footer container shipments consigned... Go 40 footer container shipments consigned to Saturnos Corporation, importer, based in Manila, ay, hindi, ito wala file niya 'yan. Oh, ito, 'yung, sa Port of Cagayan de Oro, two containers consigned to gamer, cake, food products, trading. Ito rin 'yung mga based on 'yung inspections, sea shores eh, mga sea shores niyo ito eh. Ay, binabasa ko mga sea shores niyo, oh, wala, wala rin, offense, wala rin charged. Ito 'yung, Nakudaw Corales Extension, barangay portong Cagayan de Oro. Ganun din. Uh, sea shore dito, wala rin kayong, uh, kilos dito. Oh, sa Tondo, 'yung sa, ano, Carmen Planas, three warehouses. Uh, sea shores dito, wala rin kaso. Itong, November 10, 2021, kung elan lang to. Port of Dabao, 2,300 boxes of frozen fried, fried tuna, sea shores, offense, charts, wala. And then, uh, Unican Industrial, located, so and so, et cetera. Three reefer containers, carrots, broccoli, red onions. Wala rin charts. Bakit, Attorney Valeria?
Sir, 'yung feedback po sa amin ng legal service namin, sir, that, uh, those pensions, sir, are still, uh, under, uh, profiling po nung aming Bureau Action Team Against Smugglers. Meaning, binubuo po 'yung kaso, uh, para po makasulot dun sa napag-usapan mga requirements sa pag-file ng kaso with the Department of Justice. Meron po kasing, uh, mga napagkasunduan po sa task force anti-smuggling na kailangan naming buo 'yung mga papeles para po, uh, hindi mahirapan 'yung mga prosecutors natin when we file these cases. And, uh, according to the legal service, sir, uh, binubuo naman po 'tong mga kasong to, ipa-file po nila, sir.
Uh, pero kasi 'yung listahan, sinadmit din 'yung sabi, listahan din ang Department of Justice yata ito. Eh, meron pang mas later eh, ng mga huli, may mga kaso na eh, bakit itong mga dati ang walang kaso? Kung ang sagot eh, pinag-aaral pa at, uh, inaayos ang pagpa-file.
Sir, ang iba po, may mga dokumento po yata silang hinahap, na kinakailangan sa pagfile ng kaso. May mga binubuo pa po daw silang document, sir, na kinakailangan po, uh, sa pagpa-file ng kaso. Uh, mas nauna po yata 'yung iba, kasi mas nabuuna lang, uh, mas madali 'yung.
Hindi eh, mas ma, mas, mas maposisi nga 'yung iba, mga nakapail na eh. Oh? Mas maraming later pa eh, nakapail na eh, o iba 'to, ano? Hanggang November, December, ganun 'yung mga iba eh. November 2021, ah, last year lang, October, nakapail na eh. Pero itong mga nauna, hindi pa nakapail. Ano ginagawa niyo rito sa mga, sa mga, ano, 'to, mga importer na ito? Di ba binablacklist ito?
Yes, sir, nakasuspend po agad-agad 'yung, uh, accreditation nila bilang importer, pati po 'yung mga broker, sir. Uh, we suspend them, uh, para hindi na po silang makapag-transact sa Bureau of Customs.
How many have you blacklisted in the last, uh, two years?
Sir, can I just get the figures, sir, then we'll get back?
Sige, sige, okay, and then, uh, kasi meron kayong tinatawag na active list, eh, no?
Opo.
Oh, meron din kami copy eh. Eh, pero meron kayong mga supostuwi blacklisted na doon pa sa active list eh. 'Yung isa, 'yung Natingkat, 'yung, ano ba ito? Au, au, ano, Auriom, Agricultural Products Trading. Pa sa active list pa ito, pero ito blacklisted na supostuwi eh.
Sir President, check po namin 'yan sa aming data, sir.
Alright, uh, please give it to me within the day, ano?
Opo.
In the meantime, we'll, uh, give the floor to Senator Ping Laxton.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Apropo the, uh, presentation made by Ms. Annie from Benguet, ano, who made an extensive and I think incontrovertible, uh, proof na talagang merong, uh, smuggling, ano, blatant at that, kasi nandyan sa divisoria, kung saan-saan. Now, this, there are two basic issues that mu- that must be addressed by the Bureau of Customs and the DA. First, as a condition, sinigwa nun, ano, for importation, hindi pa dapat 'yung importer mag-register muna, magpapa-credit sa AMO, uh, Bureau of Customs Accounts Management Office? Mahirap 'yan, mahirap kumuha niyan. What are the requirements para maka- makakuha ng accreditation sa AMO?
Uh, basically, uh, Mr. Senator, 'yung, ano po, kinakailangan po niyang magpresenta ng mga permits galing sa ating local government units. Uh, 'yung mga usual tax compliances po niya, kung dati na po siya nag, uh, nagtatransact o nagni-negosyo bago po siya maging importer. Uh, kung hindi man po, uh, magshow po siya ng proof na register siya sa Bureau of Internal Revenue. Um, pag hindi po kami commit sila, ni-require din po namin ng konting financial statements para po mapatunayan na meron siyang capability. Binibisita din po namin post-compliance 'yung kanilang mga offices para malaman kung.
Anyway, mahirap ko nun, di ba? Kasi due diligence napakahirap.
Opo.
Tinanong ko 'yan because this is the requirement ng mga food safety regulatory authorities para sila mag-register. So nakumpleto 'yung, uh, accreditation sa AMO, pupuntang ngayon tayo sa DA. What are the requirements of the importer or importers para makakuha ng registration sa ating FSRAs? DA?
Ganun din po, sir, uh, mahirap din po ang kumuha. Napakahirap nga lahat eh, but ang daming carrots na smuggled. Alam mo, maintindihan ko ito kung outright smuggling, because Philippine Coast Guard nasisitahin natin dito. But these are technical smuggling activities as presented by Ms. Annie, hindi ba? So how could you explain na may proliferation of smuggled carrots, vegetables, and other meat and meat products sa market? Ang hirap, ang hirap talagang, uh, i-reconcile. Napakahirap kumuha ng, uh, accreditation sa AMO. Napakahirap kumuha ng registration sa FSRAs. And yet, ba't katako tawag to smuggling? Paki-explain nga ito, mahirap naming maintindihan, maski si Senator Delon hindi maintindihan 'to, no? Kindly explain to us. Hindi naman pwedeng kontrahin 'yung sinabi ni Ms. Annie, kasi may mga proof eh. Nagkanat 'yung, uh, imagine how many kilograms of carrots 'yung, uh, given away for charity dahil hindi maibenta? Tapos 1.2 million kilos a day ang kain na iproduce, na disgraces sila because of smuggling. So from the Bureau of Customs and the Department of Agriculture kindly explain to us, kindly convince us na walang milagro nangyayari bakit may mga smuggled type vegetables? Hindi lang vegetables, meat and meat products. Kindly, kindly explain.
Um, Sir, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, one, sir, uh, actually, sir, 'yung problem po natin na smuggling decades na po. And, uh, for some time so, even if point natin dito, decades na, wala pa tayong solusyon.
In the meantime, our vegetable, uh, planters, 'yung ating hog grazers, lahat nagsasapper for decades, and we allow that. So BOC and DA again kindly convince us na walang milagro nangyayari bakit, bakit, uh, uh, nagpo-ploreparate 'yung smuggled, uh, vegetables and meat products?
Sir, uh, as per, uh, study, sir, namin, sir, lahat naman, sir, 'to, technical smuggling. When you say technical smuggling, sir, lahat sir ito dumadaan sa all legal trade channel, sir. So kung dumadaan siya sa legal trade channel, sir, dumadaan pa rin siya sa process, sir. Uh, dumadaan pa rin siya sa SPSIC, sa BOC inspection, lahat po, sir. Pero, sir, ang nangyayari lang, sir, 'yan, is 'yung problem po natin sa automation, sir. Papalit din po tayo doon sa automation, that's why, 'yung nga po ang sanang, uh, we'll be making a presentation later, sir, to give you insight kung papaano, sir, natin malabanan, sir.
We're not satisfied. Kindly explain to us bakit ang daming, uh, smuggled na vegetables? We're not satisfied. I won't stop questioning unless we're satisfied with your explanation, both Bureau of Customs and DA.
Sir, uh, wala, sir, kaming ready answer for that, but, uh, wala, sir, kaming, ano, but to exert more effort on addressing, sir, smuggling, sir. Kaya nga hindi kami nag-i-stop as per guidance and instruction po sa amin. Especially with BOC, sir, kaya kasi, sir, nung, uh, sometime 2021, naging effective, sir, 'yung partnership with, uh, DTI, DA, and BOC, sir. That's why, kung even if, ikukumpere mo, sir, for the last 2020, 19 to 2020, sir, wala, sir, activity tayong masyadong nahuli sa agricultural smuggling. But comes 2021, sir, starting April, sir, nung nagumpisa ng BOC at, uh, 'yung STGE, sir. Naging effective, sir, siya, kahit na konti ang resources, kahit nang ang tao, sir. Ang laki, sir, nung nakuha namin, sir, na file, na to address 'yun. Otherwise, sir, kung hindi natin, kami nag-partner with BOC, hindi rin natin na, wala ang action, sir, dun.
Dagdagan mo pa 'yung sang napakahirap na requirement, CSW, 'yung warehouse. Ang hirap din 'yan. Bakit nakatalabas pa rin ang, uh, CSW, 'yung mga smuggled?
That's why, sir, uh, actually, ngayon, sir, we're just addressing smuggling, sir, smuggler. Wala pa, sir, tayo sa hoarders, wala pa tayo sa price manipulators, wala pa, sir, tayo sa profiteers. Sir, ang dami pa, sir, natin ia-address, just like, uh, importation of rice na lang, sir. Mag-i-import, sir, tayo ng rice, legal naman lahat, sir, but unscrupulous trader, sir, i-re-repack, magiging local, sir, po siya, mas mahal na naman.
We're not even dealing with repacking eh.
Yes, sir.
We're dealing with, uh, smuggling.
Sabi ko, ang hirap kunin lahat ng mga requirements, pero parang andali-dali sa mga smugglers na lumusot.
Um, uh, siguro, sir, is, uh, ganun lang din, sir, just like, uh, other, other crimes, other group, sir, natin. Is, uh, katulad ng, uh, gambling, sir, drugs, sir, nag-i-evolve, sir, sir, sila. Iipinapantayan, sir, natin 'tong ganitong hoarder, ganito ang gagawin, sir, natin. Magki-create na naman, sir, sila, dahil be creative na naman, sir, how to, paano iikutan, sir, tayo.
Go back to that issue after my colleagues have, uh, profound their questions. In the meantime, moving on, Mr. President. Magkano 'yung, uh, naiwan pang budget to sa African swine fever? 'Yung funds niyo, meron pa ba 'yan?
Meron pa po, sir, uh, hindi ko lang.
Sino nagre-release ng funds?
Sir, uh, 'yung, uh, livestock mo namin, sir.
Okay. Ito reklamo ito na umabot sa amin, 'yung, sa Cotobato, North Cotobato, Mlang. Nakareadson ito, uh, last January. Certain, Mrs. Teresa Engata, member siya ng Magallón Farmers Association. Ang daming, uh, tinamaan sa kanila. 'Yung SMLang lang, 10 out of their 37 villages nagdepopulate ng 2,044, uh, hogs, ano, that came from 430 hog grazers. Ang nag-abono rito local government unit, 10.7 million. Di ba, magkano pa pondo naiwan sa ASF?
Wala, sir, akong alam exact idea, sir.
Who knows, from the DA? Kasi nandito rin 'yung mga hog grazers eh. I think they will benefit to find out from you, from the DA, kung ano nangyari doon sa ating, uh, ASF, 'yung funding sa ASF. Wala sagot?
Sir, uh, so far, sir, nasa, 'yung fund, sir, natin is to address, sir, 'yung, uh, ASF. Other than that, sir, 'yung sa research po, kung how to, uh.
Yeah, 'yung depopulation.
Tsaka 'yung repopulation.
Kasi namatayan sila, kailangan bibigan ng, I think, 5,000 pesos?
Uh, actually, sir, hindi lang 5,000 ngayon, sir, in-increase pa po.
Eh, ba't wala nakukuha 'yung, ano, mga hog grazers?
Uh, sir, uh, merong, sir, ano, sir, may process of, they have to facilitate.
Hindi, pwede sila ng proseso nga eh.
Yes, sir.
Pero ang nangyari, kasi helpless, ang nag-rescue, local government unit. Hindi namakalakihan 'yung, narinig mo na ba 'yung Mlang, kung saan?
Mlang.
Si, ngayon hindi mo alam 'yung Mlang, yeah, Mlang. Ngayon hindi mo alam kung nasaan. Imit sabihin, malintat, malintat tawon 'yun. Sa North Cotobato, yes.
Yeah.
Ang laki ng tama nila, and yet, DA has no idea.
Uh, pupunta ko lang, sir, 'yung detail, sir.
Paki-homework mo nga 'yan.
Well done, sir.
So you haven't answered any of my questions. BOC. Ang sagot niyo is standard eh, naselibro, alam na rin naman namin 'yung mga requirements, and tanong, bakit nakakalusot in spite of the stringent requirements to acquire or to, uh, get those, uh, accreditation, registration, and so forth and so on?
Sir, I think siguro bahakulang kami sa, sa post-compliance. Sa pag, pag a-acredit naman po, uh, sinusunod naman namin very strictly 'yung mga requirements.
Ang problema mag-a-acredit, iba blacklist, magpapalit ng pangalan, ya credit ni ulit. Di ba?
Sir, may mga nangyaring ganon, at 'yun po siguro 'yung kailangan namin.
So saan tayo magtatapos dito? Wala tayong sagot kay Ms. Annie. Wala tayong sagot to sa hog grazers. Saan tayo magtatapos? Eh, kayong dalawa 'yung nagkakaalaman dya sa importation, accreditation, and registration, and everything? How do you tell them?
Sir, may proposal po kami, uh.
Eh, ang tagal na natin picosappen, December, 'yung last meeting natin, may proposal na rin kayo eh. Eh, sabi nga ni Ms. Annie, as of March 24, andyan pa rin 'yung smuggled na carrots eh. Naglailo lang noong napagkataas ng hearing nun December. O doon sa maglalailo uli after this hearing. And after one week, two weeks, andyan na naman 'yung mga smuggled. So ganyan tayo, business cycle. In the meantime, wala tayong institutionalized na solusyon.
Sir, if ma-aapprove po sana 'yung proposal namin to have, uh, a pre-shipment inspection for agricultural product? Uh, baka po.
Andyan na sa batas eh, alam mo, tatlong batas ito, oh. Ang pakarami ni, RA 10611 Food Security App, passed in 2013. RA 10863 CMTA, enacted in 2016. Another one, RA 10845, 'yung, uh, agri-smuggling. May nakasuhan na ba rito, agri-smuggling? Ako alam po, nakasuhan ko si Paylon dun, pero hanggang ngayon pending pa. Ito 'yung batas ni Senator Villar eh. Ang lagi iningay niya, meron ba tayong test case na rito? Ang tagal na napasa nito. Lagi ko sinasagot sa kanya, ako nag-file na ng kaso. Kayo ba may naipail na kaso? 10845?
Sa anti-agricultural smuggling po, uh, may mga nafile na po kaming kaso sa Department of Justice, sir.
Anong status? Uh, PI pa lang?
PI, PI po, at meron na, kung hindi po ako naghahamay, baka.
Yan.
Ilan? How many, how many cases have you filed? Senator Villar will be very interested, siya ang auto-sponsor nito.
Uh, I just want to comment, uh, Senator Ping, that, uh, that bill is economic sabotage non-viable, dapat nakakulong.
Basta sa threshold na 10 million pesos, lumapat. Yeah, nobel 'yan, capital offense 'yan.
At mga, uh, sa rise lang 'yung 10 million, sa other agricultural products, 1 million lang ang threshold.
Stand corrected, tama. Attorney Gohit would like to respond.
Spot. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the committee. Uh, based on our data, in so far as agricultural smuggling is concerned, uh, the DOJ were able to file four cases of agricultural smuggling. We have, um, reported this during the last, uh, hearing, and, um, for now, your honors, um, uh, the cases that the DOJ filed are pending before the regional trial courts in Manila City. Uh, in so far as, uh, specific cases, Your Honor, I requested the presence of the handling prosecutors. If I may be allowed to inform the honorable committee on what happened in these cases, then I will gladly inform the committee, Your Honor. So, for one of the cases handled by prosecutor, uh, Villar Dun, uh, we were informed to office that, uh, the accused in this case was able to, uh, 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 get, uh, favorable order granting his petition for bail. So in that case, Your Honor, the, the accused is out on bail by virtue of an order of the court granting the petition for bail. In one case, Your Honor, we just received, uh, an information from other handling prosecutor. Uh, there was an order from the regional trial court dated February 2022. The case was dismissed because the court granted the demuretto evidence filed by the accused. The case was dismissed because the court granted the demuror to evidence filed by the accused. As to the case of handled by prosecutor Fernandez, the court granted the motion of the accused for re-investigation. So the case now against the accused is pending preliminary investigation.
Non-available.
Ah, yes, your honor, we understand, your honor. Um, as to the case of prosecutor Arrellano, your honor, um, we have yet to receive an order from the court for the arraignment of the accused. So until now, your honor, according to the handling prosecutor, the court has not issued the order yet. So that is the update of the four cases filed, in so far as agricultural smuggling cases.
Thank you, Attorney. One last issue is wrong, Mr. President, Mr. German. Sino nag-i-issue ng SPSIC sa, 'yung sa meat and meat products, DA? Please.
Sir, pagka 'yung, ano sir, 'yung mga imported na buo sir sa, ano sir, bae.
Bureau of Animal Industry, anong nasa batas? Sino dapat?
NMIS sir.
Ang nasa batas, 'yung National Meat Inspection Service.
Yes sir.
Gumawa ang DA ng administrative order, transfer 'yung authority to issue SPSIC sa BAI. Hindi ba 'yung surpersion of authority yan? Kasi diba may kasabihan, 'yung spring cannot rise above its source? Ang batas, sinasabi, National Meat Inspection. 'Yung administrative order ng DA, ang biglang nilipat sa BAI, bakit? Ba't hindi niyo sinusunod 'yung batas? Kaya siguro tayo nagkakaloko-loko din. Institucional, hindi lang human factor ang pumapasok. Inaalaw natin, bakit nasa BAI ang nasa batas NMIS? Last hearing, sinabi titingnan daw, ngayon hearing uli tayo, titingnan ulit. Kailan ginawa yun? Aseca lasiste, sinong secretary of agriculture na nagdugawa nyan?
Um, may galuh sir, hindi pa sir ako nandyan sir nung metra sir. I have no idea sir.
Please find out, hold the DA.
Will do sir.
And find out, sino naglipat? Dahil sabi sa batas NMIS, tapos nilipat sa Bureau for BAI.
Will do sir.
Sige. Sige para may, ay si Miss Annie, may tatanong natin. Yes, Miss Palanoy, go ahead.
Ah, may follow-up, support question po sa mga tanong ni Senator Laxon, para po sa Bureau of Customs and kay Aseca lasiste. Kaya Aseca lasiste especially po, because we had this dialogue last March nineteen. So binigay po namin 'yung information dun sa inyo about dun sa, nagdi-distribute po dun sa proxy market, 'yung, 'yung Chinese po doon na nagdi-distribute ng carrots. But up to now po, hindi pa po naaksunan. Marami pa rin po ang dini-distribute po niya na carrots. How come, it's already, March twenty-eight, March nineteen po tayong nag-usap? Kasi, kung tutuusin, dun po sa dialogue po natin pa, parang walang magandang, masyadong magandang positive result po doon. The only thing that came out from there na parang positive eh, 'yung magkaroon kami ng direct na linya po sa inyo. But aside from that, wala po lahat kasi, basically, kung ano po 'yung explain niyo po sa amin, it's the same thing that you're explaining now. And also to Bureau of Customs, kasi we understand that the DA is highly involved in this issue because agricultural products nga po 'yung, 'yung mga malakihan na ini-smuggle. But the Bureau of Customs is not, I do not know kung meron po kayo talagang ginagawa. Considering po na sabi ni Aseca lasiste when we had this dialogue, na underman po sila, kulang po ang personol nila, kulang ang budget. So siguro naman mas malaki ang budget ng Bureau of Customs. How come, may mga information po na pumapasok sa amin na pinapayagan po 'yung mga, mga van, container vans na mga yan, without even proper documentation po, or mali 'yung documents po nila. Yun lang po.
Mr. President, with the permission of Senator Laxon.
Yes, one last point lang, Senator Gigo. Coming from law enforcement, ako meron nang sagot, may explanation sa mga tanong ni Miss Annie, no? Pag wala nangyayari, may kompromiso, simple as that. So kindly look into that, yun ang problema dyan. Thank you.
Mr. President, with the permission of the Chair, Senator Laxon. Just very quickly, base dun sa interpolations and questions raised by Senator Laxon, at hindi naman maipaliwanag, paulit-ulit lang, at 'yung kawalan ng aksyon na binabanggit ng ating vegetable growers, sampung araw na. Ah, may nakumpromiso, I agree, but at the same time, may untouchable. May mga untouchable, malakas ang kapit na ayaw nilang, ayaw nilang habulin. Yan ang basa ko dyan. Yan din ang naging karanasan natin sa paghahabol ng mga involved sa rise smuggling. Ah, at least nung panahon na yun, walang untouchable dahil talagang sinampahan natin ang mga kaso, sinuspende natin 'yung mga ilang mga kasabot. Pero dito, kung ganyan walang kilos at langtaran, yes, compromised. May nakokumpromiso sa BOC, sa DA, at may mga untouchable, ayaw nilang habulin. Masyado siguro malapit sa mga nakaupo, kaya ganyan ang sitwoso. Dapat siguro nabanggit kanina, Mr. President, 'yung Congressman Yap na involved daw, tama po ba yun? Ah, sa smuggling, nabanggit mga vegetable grower, can you?
Yeah, according to, according to Miss Palanoy. Now, now that you mention it, Senator Paganilhan, may mga untouchable. Would you know who these untouchables are?
Yun nga ang nabanggit kanina ni, ng vegetable grower, na, na, may information na lumabas na itong si Congressman Yap, tama po ba yun? I heard it earlier during the presentation. Baka pwedeng ipaliwanag ng kaunti pa. Saan nakuha 'yung informasyon involving Congressman Yap?
Go ahead, Miss Palanoy.
Actually sir, we based it on the report of Senator Laxon way back two thousand seventeen na na-published po sa Manila Times. Yes. So it is an investigative report, and I used to be a media man myself. So alam ko po ng isang investigative report ay hindi basta-basta pinapalabas hang, kung wala pong evidensya.
Would you have a copy of that investigative report, or at least the article, so that it can be submitted to committee?
Yes sir, and it's available online po, the Manila Times published, I think sometime two thousand twenty.
Yes, so kung meron.
Will send, will send.
Yes, Mr. President, kung meron pinangalanganan dun, yun siguro.
Andun po sa privileged page ko yun, 'yung Tara sa Customs, lumabas 'yung pangalan.
Yes, yes.
Alright, next is Senator Coco Pimitel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nung narinig ko 'yung technical smuggling versus outright smuggling, ang pakiramdam ko nga, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Marunilia atsaka si Aseca lasiste, kasi kayo matagal ng na-eencounter to mga to eh. Actually, mas malakas ang loob ni technical smuggler eh, kesa kay outright smuggler. Kasi si outright smuggler, sabi niya makakalusot ako, wala naman ako record eh. Si technical smuggler, recorded, sabi nga ni Aseca lasiste, legal channels ang ginagamit eh. Diba? So, malakas nga ang loob nila technical smugglers. Kasi even though I have applied through a difficult process, I have given a lot of my personal data, and yet, I will still do it. Hop, hoping or knowing that I will not be caught, or I will not be charged, or the case, the cases will be dismissed. Parang ganun eh, ganun na lumalabas eh, so baka, ano na to eh, hindi lang ito, the technical smuggler somehow feels na meron siyang proteksyon, eh sa lakas ng loob niya. Yun ang nakukuha kong ano eh, yun ang nakukuha kong impression eh. Ang hirap ng proseso, granted, ang aking authority, permits ko granted. Tapos imi-misuse ko, yun po 'yung technical smuggling sir, no? Aseca lasiste, I have a permit, I misuse it. Ah, I have a permit for ornamental plants, ganun ba yun? And then I, I import carrots, ganun ba yun? Eh ganun ba yun? Iapply natin dun sa example ni Agot.
Yes, your honor.
Ah, strawberries, strawberries, sorry, sorry, strawberries, strawberries. Tama, ganun yun, ganun, diba? So technically speaking, the, so technical smuggling yun, but this person who made the strawberries arrive under a permit for ornamental plants, ano, has his identity recorded, dapat ganun eh, fully disclosed yun eh. Pero matapang ba rin, tama ba Aseca lasiste matapang? Bakit kaya, ano, ano yun, ano kayo feeling nun? Number one, insulto ba ito sa law enforcement natin na, hindi ako mahuhuli? Yun ba yun? Or matapang siya na, meron siyang guarantor na di ka mahuhuli? O kung mahuhuli ka man, lusot ka? Anong pakiramdam niyo sir? Kasi walang, walang ma-explain ko, I mean, then, din- declared mo na eh. Ako ito ha, itong address ko ha, kaya mamaya papasok tayo sa mga address. Baka nga sa address tayo nagkakalukohan, eh kaya matapang eh. May I have a name, and then maybe the address is not correct? Ano ba nangyari sa, sa farmally, diba? Para yun sa farmally, pinisita 'yung opisya na wala na, wala na dun, o a nonexistent address? Ngayon, pasok tayo dyan, kasi kung ganun nga, there's something wrong with our recording or reportorial requirements, kung ganun. Yes, Aseca, can you, can you just give me your, ano mo na, 'yung sentimiento sa sinabi ko? What is your initial reaction?
Tama pa kayo, your honor. Ah, ganun po talaga 'yung ano, facilitation of technical smuggling. Most of this, 'yung mga nahuli po natin, actually are through process sa food. Meron po siyang importation, ang declaration po niya is sa processed food, pastry, bread, chapati. Pero ang laman sir, onions.
So we have already real-life cases, diba? Incidents recorded. Sempre, and then, so we know now the name of the importer who engage in technical smuggling, ganun nangyari, diba? Pero ano ba, when we run after these people, we run after the juridical entity to, ang suggestion ko kasi is, do we blacklist now the name of the juridical entity? Ang suggestion ko sana, go beyond the juridical entity, and target, pierce the corporate veil. Ah, disclose the people behind the corporate entity, blacklist them also. Parang ganun, is that what we do, Attorney Marunilia?
Yes, Mr. Senator, that's what we actually do. We, once a violation of the cause of small decisionary factor, other related laws is done, we actually pierce the veil already. So we don't just blacklist the actual company, we also blacklist the personalities involved.
Okay, so there are, kunyari, corporation XYZ, and then Mister A B, A B C D E. So when you blacklist the corporation, you also blacklist the five. Are you sure about this? These five can never be incorporated of another corporation now applying, getting another, uh, becoming another licensed importer, is that what happens?
That's what I was informed by the legal service, Mr. Senator. I'll have to confirm, but as far as some of the documents I saw, the responsible officers recorded with the Bureau, the president and other members of the corporation are actually the ones where cases are being filed against and blacklisted in the Bureau of Customs system.
And then, sa real-life experiences natin, dun sa mga na-blacklist natin na corporate entity, tinignan natin 'yung records nila, may mga times pa na 'yung address na yun ay inaccurate addresses. Pagdating niyo dun, hindi naman, wala naman pala dun. So even the court processes do not progress because hindi ma-serve ng mga saumons o sampina.
May ganung instances po, Senator, but what we do now is that after, immediately after the accreditation process, we do post-compliance already. That's why there were several companies that had to be suspended because they were, they were found to have irregularities in their addresses. Either they were not existing there, or there were signage commitments that were not done, or they had misrepresentations in their application.
Oh, so na-suspend yung, what suspended the license?
Yeah, the accreditation to import.
Accreditation to import? 'Yung accreditation to import ba, already allows them to import?
Yeah, yes.
So sayang, medyo sana, sana 'yung strictness is before, a step before, diba? Kasi, I'm sure, kunyari, may one hundred kayo na bigyan na accreditation to import, and then now begin to import 'yung one hundred. Hindi perfectly compliant 'yung one hundred na yun, as you have discovered. Sana from the start, 'yung strictness ninyo sa umpisa. Before, it's a step before releasing that accreditation to import, sana. Sana ganun, Attorney.
Yes sir, we'll, we'll look into that, very good suggestion.
Diba? Kasi parang nagpo, parang nagpo-post audit lang kayo sa ano, and then nakita niyo 'yung mga nalusutan kayo, yun. So yun, most likely, kung, kung linis kayo sa address, alam mo na, ibig sabihin no, ibig sabihin, hindi kami magtatagal sa negosyo yung ito, diba? Kung, kung maglalagay, kung maglalagay na mga address na fake, o wala dun, or incomplete, o pampalito na address, alam mo na.
Sir, 'yung, 'yung rational po kasi namin, kaya kami nagpo-post compliance is that one of the requirements that are submitted to us is a mayor's business permit coming from the LGU, and part of the requirement po kasi, bago sila issue na mga group permit, pinipisita na po sila ng LGU. So para hindi po repetitious 'yung process. Pinaniniwalaan na po namin 'yung mga, 'yung ganung klaseng examination na gawa ng ating mga local government units. And then we just do post-validation, but with your suggestion sir.
Oo nga, mukhang, with real-life experience kasi natin, ganun eh, so. Pero common sense yun, ano, na, kung incomplete 'yung address, o hindi seriosong pag-list dun sa address, alam mo na, hindi tatagal sa negosyo. Kung hindi tatagal sa negosyo, ano purpose niya? Mag-one time big time, or two-time big time, ganun, siguro gagawin nila. So anyway, siguro ganun, kasi sinabi ni Aseca lasiste, dekada na daw na problema to. So let's also use our imagination on how to, to address this problem. Based on experience, anohin natin, ganun lang, kahit incremental steps, maalay mo. Maalay mo, we are already helping the cost. Ngayon, ito, final question, Mr. President, ano ba talaga pagdating sa vegetables? Ano ang policy ng gobyerno ngayon? Are we importing, allowing the importation or not of vegetables? And are we distinguishing between fresh and frozen? Meron bang frozen vegetables na, na items?
Ah, yes, your honor. Dito po sa, karamihan po na dumaan nating na-smuggle po, ega rin po ng China. But as per, dito po sa DA po, what we don't issue po sir, import permit for sa vegetable coming from China. Dahil hindi pa po tayo nakapag-test, hindi, ah, hindi pa po accredited 'yung mga vegetable po nila para pumasok sa atin. We only allow po 'yung mga fruits po from China. Other than that, 'yung onions po, pwede po sa ibang country like US and Australia po, carrots.
So generally speaking, ganun ba, generally speaking, pag makahanap tayo sa merkado, may market man or sa supermarket or grocery, ng imported vegetable, generally speaking, bawal.
Bawal po, pero yun nga po ang problem po namin sa DA. Because if we expect na magkaroon ng active roles po ang DA sa smuggling, ah, sana po, meron pong ano, dedicated office to address that. Kasi for now po, medyo malabna po 'yung legal mandate po ng DA. Even if makita po natin sa mga supermarkets, makita po natin sa tabisoria, hindi po automatic po na DA can address po yun. We have to call on BOC, under po sa RA one zero eight four five. Only BOC can address ang, ang mandate po ng smuggling, nasa BOC po. So tatawag pa po kami ng BOC, I will request for LOA para masamahan po kami, para kunin po natin ito sa mga warehouse po. Ganun po ang procedure. Ang DA only is for coordination lang po. Kaya kami po, ngayon sa under sub-ascrite on economic intent. Kaya kami po, uh, ngayon sa under, uh, Subtask Group on Economic Intelligence, we only provide information sa B O C. B O C now will give, uh, alert order, or pag lumabas na, sir, 'yung letter of, uh, authority na pasukin mag, sir, namin 'yung mga, uh, warehouse.
So, di, tama nga. This is, this hearing is in aid of legislation, so 'yung, 'yung topic na renees mo, yun, tutukan na yun, uh, the powers of the, uh, D A in the fight against smuggling. Sabi mo kulang. You're more of coordinative. Uh, I think, and, and dito, sir, si Yusek Castillo, maybe you can inform this representation. Pagdating nga sa mga, okay, uh, grocery, or supermarket, or market, 'yung the, the, the traditional market, uh, the market and wet market, paano ba 'yung inspection yan? Uh, whose, whose, whose job is that really, uh, D, D, D T I? And what is the role of the D A? Kasi alam ko naman na may agricultural products found doon eh, sa loob ng mga venues na yon. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, on retailer, uh, the monitoring of retail products in the market, agricultural, uh, smuggled agricultural products in particular, wala pong authority ang Department of Trade and Industry. We are only working through the Subtask Group on Economic Intelligence. Uh, there are particular objectives po in the creation of this subtask group. Ang, right now, we are focusing on enforcement, monitoring and enforcement ng mga dumadating na agricultural products. But sa retail po, sir, uh, we do not have the mandate, and that would be one of the recommendations, actually, of the S T G E I. Kung pwede po, uh, monitoring of retail goods, agricultural products especially, kung pwede, sir, ibigay sa isang particular agency para ma-monitor siya, and if, um... If possible, sana, sir, kasi you would find agricultural products in the market now purely unlabelled. So consumers cannot identify whether these products are imported or locally produced. So wala naman pong law that specifies that this has to be, uh, labeled. So what we do in the D T I and the D A currently, puro, uh, request lang po kami sa retailers for them to identify these products and make sure that, uh, it's labeled, kung especially for agricultural meat products, uh, kung imported siya. Sana, sir, kung pwedeng i-mandate ang agency, or whatever agency na ibigay 'yung, 'yung, uh, mandate to monitor and to mandate also the retailers to label, uh, whether it's imported or local. Para mas madali rin po sa law enforcement agencies, sir, to identify kung imported siya, o ititrace na natin 'yung source, if it's, uh, if it went through proper clearances, or kung nasmuggle siya at nakatting sa market. Because we have to admit, sir, currently, you find, we all find imported vegetables in major supermarkets, uh, currently, sir.
So, pa- paano ablang? So, so in real life, ma'am, may Yusek, so pagbisita mo, di mo bisita kayo sa supermarket, merong agricultural product doon, may vegetable doon eh, okay. If you suspect that it's smuggled vegetable, ano gagawin mo?
Uh, Mr. President, we'll have to call on the B O C, sir, to verify kung smuggled siya o hindi. Hindi po namin kaya, sir.
Yun nga, so you call. So, okay, real life na, real life. Oh, Yusek, who do you call? Sige, name, name, name the person or ano na ginagawa mo sa tunay na buhay. Sino?
Sir, si Deputy Commissioner, uh, Ramiro, ng, na Deputy Commissioner po, he was the one assigned to us by Commissioner De Guerero, sir. Now, we, we are in touch with him naman.
Oh, ano nangyari, Attorney, pag, pag nareceive na ni Deputy Commissioner 'yung information, anong gagawin niya?
Sir, he will, ano, recommend for the issuance of a letter of authority in exercise of the visitorial powers of the commissioner. And go to, uh, that particular supermarket and ask for, uh, compliance. They will ask, uh, for import compliance coming from the owners. Either point out kung kanino po nanggaling 'yung supply, or kung meron po silang, uh, uh, any document that would prove that these were legally imported. Otherwise, sir, we will seize those, uh, imported, uh, items.
Okay, so who, who, who goes there? Lawyers or mga, may tao kayo, or hindi niyo na action na lahat ng report?
Sir, may mga tao naman po kami. Medyo konti, medyo hindi po ganun karami, but, uh, uh, enough naman po to be able to respond to those kinds of, uh, requests coming from other government agencies. May sarili po kaming law enforcement unit, which is the Customs Police, sir.
Okay, sige. So ganun din siguro dun sa mga, uh, sa la- sa lahat ng binibisita niyo, no? Uh, grocery, supermarket, and markets, diba? Mark. Wait, uh, Mr. President, and, uh, may dear colleagues, meron po kasi tayong one, one, uh, very important treaty na pending pa sa Senado ngayon, which will hopefully happen by, when we, when we resume session in May. Uh, this is the R C E P, the Regional Comprehensive Economic Partnership. Now, and one of the features is that rules of origin, diba? Uh, sabi natin once, and dito si Asik Epte, so of the detail, this is question, this question is, uh, directed to you. Rules of origin is one of the features of that treaty, which we are trying to, to, uh, tell, uh, the senators and all, all those interested, that one of the benefits of, uh, the treaty, diba? So, ganun na importante ngayon sa trade matters, 'yung origin of the goods. Ngayon, minentso ngayon ni Yusek Castillo na it would help kung 'yung mga for sale na agricultural, uh, items and all the others, kahit siguro 'yung mga manufactured items na nandun na 'yung origin nila, saan sila galing. Oh, can, do we need, do we need, uh, a law for this or such a treaty which puts importance on origin, such as the rules of origin, could be, could be now of the basis that 'yung mga binibenta dito sa Pilipinas, the seller take the initiative to inform the buyer, ano origin ng mga goods na yon? Yes, uh, Asik Epte?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and, uh, good morning, Mr. President, and of course, honorable senators and colleagues from the government. Uh, pagdating po sa rules of origin, uh, sa one important chapter under the Regional Comprehensive Economic Partnership Agreement, material po siya, sir, for purposes of claiming preferential arrangement. So in other words, so pag nagimport ka, you just have to submit the necessary proof na indeed, this particular product is qualified to obtain preferential arrangement. So yun po 'yung purpose ng rules of origin. So dun po siya sa importation process po, magmamater. So kung sa labeling po, hindi po siya kasama po dun kung dating na sa mga.
That's correct, that's correct. So yun 'yung concept na rules of origin, but the point is 'yung concept na ngayon that, uh... The origin of goods is now important to know. Yun ay lumalabas ngayon eh. So, diba? So, ito nga 'yung, ito nga 'yung problem ng D T I or ng D A, when they encounter, they go on their inspection visits, they see products, agricultural products, vegetables, fruits, hindi sinasabi ko sa anggaling. So, pwedeng sabihin, local yon, pero ano pala, smuggled na imported. So, I'm highlighting the fact that it's important now to disclose the origin of the items being sold to the market. Okay, kasi nga, even in treaties, pinag-uusapan na 'yung origin. If you are originating from this area, you are entitled to preferential tariff pursuant to a treaty. So ganun po yon. So, ang tanong namin ni, ni Senator President, uh, Yusek Castillo, do we need a law to, to require that, or pwede nyo ng, by executive order or department order, require the vendors, the sellers, supermarket owners to take the extra step, find out the origin, and print nila dun, nilagay niya dun next to, below the price, siguro?
Um, Mr. President, sir, uh, currently, for manufactured food products and medical devices, labeling is required under the Consumer Act of the Philippines. Uh, hindi po nakaspecify dun ang agricultural products, so maybe, um, uh, maybe a supplementation to the Consumer Act may be made, or maybe, uh, we're actually already proposing that in the revision of the Consumer Act, which we are currently pushing for this Congress, uh, pwede ng isama rin 'yung labeling for agricultural products, sir.
Thank you, thank you, uh, thank you to the resource person. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Pimentel. Uh, ulo nga namin next Congress na. And yeah, but, but anyway, uh, I just have to place on record also, nalulungkot kami nila, Senator, la, saan din, naririnig kami 'yung report na sinasabi ng D A, Kostos. Alam niyo pala kung papaano eh. Kung papaano 'yung smuggling eh. Ba't di niyo mapigil? Alam niyo kung papaano ginagawa eh. Alam ninyo eh. Diba? Uh, kala. Anyway, for the record, Assistant Director Ariel Bayot of P P I is already online, is been invited by Senator Pangilinan, but, uh... Next on deck is Senator, uh, Frank Rilon, the minority leader, because he is an officer, but I don't see him on, uh, virtually yet, but, um, we'd like to ask Congressman Rico Heron of the Aga Partiliste. Kasi nagpapalam siya na pagkakailangan after natsumalis. So, gusto ko naming kamustahin. Niya kaming mga naririto ngayon, we are, kamusta 'yung mga hog grazers? Pagkatapos nung pinagbigyan natin na two hundred fifty thousand, uh, metric tons ng pork na pinabaan tarifa. Kamusta kayong, uh, hog grazers?
Alam naman natin ang nangyari ngayon, uh, kahit pa sabihing meron pong kahulangan, Mr. President, sa supply ng baboy, ay tumata- mataas ang presyo sa meat. Eh, pero napakalaki na rin ng operating expenses. Bulso ng, of course, kinakailangang mga measure para maiwasan ang pagkakasakit at ang mortality na, of course, kasama yon sa cost. So, talaga pong hirap na hirap, at karamihan dun sa ating mga magbababoy ay hindi pa rin makabalik. Or particularly sa area ng Norte, Nueva Isia, up to now, ay hindi po kami makapag-expand 'yung aming mga constituents dyan. Hindi makapag-expand sa pagbababuyan dahil namamatay pa rin. So, hindi pa sila makabalik. Kahit anong repopulation program, ang gawain ay patuloy na namamatay ang mga baboy. Samantalang ang presyo ay tumataas ng bahagya, mabilis naman ang pagtaas ng cost to produce. Gusto ko lamang po sana magbigay ng comment, sapagkat doon sa pinakikita ng ating mga kasamahang magugulay, it's very obvious, talaga pong nakikita sa mga lokal ng pamilihan, ang kahun-kahun ng mga carrots. Talagang glaring, kahit po doon sa Batangas, doon sa Tanawan, Bagsakan, eh, talagang maliwanag na maliwanag na ibinebenta ng lantaran. At bulag na lang siguro talaga, hindi makakakita. So ang nakapagtataka, considering that these items are, uh, really illegal items, ay walang magawa tayo ang ating mga otoridad para maipatupad ang batas na huwag maipagbili ang mga produktong ilegal sa ating mga pamilihan. Uh, hindi ko po alam, pero palagay ko eh, hindi na talaga kailangan ang mga documentation. It's obvious, it's glaring na ating nakikita sa mga pamilihan, ano, ay wala, wala namang kumikilos o wala namang gumagalaw para ito ay, uh, kumpiskahin man lamang o maipatigil. They're doing it as a regular, uh... Yeah, as a regular item na katulad ng ipinagbibili ng ating mga magsasaka. At ang isa pa hong nakakabaala ay, ano kaya ang content ng mga produktong ito considering na tumatagal sila ng napakatagal, kahit hindi nakalagay sa refrigerator? Ito po 'yung ating sinasabi, kahit sa bigas, na inuumpisahan nating ipaliwanag sa ating mga consumer na kung ganyan na hindi natin alam ang source at ang content, ay talaga pong dapat ay hindi masatangkilikat katulad ng sinasabi ng ating Senator President, sapagkat nakakatakot po ang kumain ng mga ganyang klase ng produkto. And I think the D T I can do something about it, dahil talagang, uh, uh, napakalaking threat sa kalusugan ng ating mga mamamayan ang mga produktong ganyan. Parang ay pong salamat, Mr. President.
Thank you. So Senator Rilon, uh, are you ready? If not, we will then have to skip and, uh, recognize, uh, Senator Pangilinan, your, uh, invitee is already here.
Ang mga initay si Senator Pangilinan, Mr. President. Good, para lang, uh, hindi rin masayang oras. Alam niyo, Sir President, sa experience ko na sa law enforcement, 'yung, 'yung two-prong approach to combat illegal drugs and, uh, carnapping, pareho rin sa smuggling, demand reduction and market constriction. Tama sinabi ni Congressman, uh, Heron, no? Kung pinaguhuli 'yung mga nasa market, ano, ordinary vendor sa kakawa, dahil umapunta sa kanila, yun na market constriction strategy, dun sa two-prong strategy. Yung, uh, demand reduction, 'yung mga mark, 'yung, uh, supply reduction, yun naman yun sa smuggling. Diba? Two-prong supply reduction and market constriction or demand reduction, para rin labas sa illegal drugs eh. Para rin labas sa carnapping. Kung 'yung two-prong, uh, strategy na yun, yaplay natin. Palay ko, hindi mag, uh, maglo-referit 'yung, uh, smuggled vegetables. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, uh, Kasitong Good.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, dun sa Food Safety Act, no, uh... Yung sa inspection of, uh, and labeling, meron dun sa batas na, na sinasabing, ano eh, maski agricultural product dapat eh may labeling kung, uh, imported na galing sa ibang bansa. So, nasa, nasa Food Safety Act yon, so hindi totoo na wala dun sa batas. Uh, nandun sa section eight, no? Uh, rule, uh... Rule ano, eight point, uh, four and eight point eight five, eight point eight six. Uh, 'yung, 'yung labeling nandun eh, tsaka rule, uh, number eight uh, number V. So 'yung packaging and labeling nandun, so dapat pwedeng gawin na huliin. Yung mga imported product na, nasa merkado na walang labeling, uh, kung saan galing or anong klase, pwedeng huliin ng, uh, ng ano, uh, D A.
Alright, uh, yes, Ms. Belaloy?
Mag-comment lang, sir, about the, the, 'yung nahirapan daw po na mag-identify kung smuggled o hindi. If you go to the markets po, 'yung mga karton po doon ay may tatak na fresh produce, uh, fresh carrots, uh, product of China, ten kilograms, ganun po. Hindi naman po, hindi naman po nila, uh, tinatago, so it is easily identified po talaga.
Alright, uh, yes, Senator Pimentel, good.
So, okay, ayan, uh, feedback ngayon, sa tunay na buhay na naman niyo, so, ganun, Asik, uh, Asiste, oh. Uh, fresh carrots from China, let's say alam natin, oh. Bawal o hindi na makita sa Philippine market?
Bawal po, sir.
Bawal, okay. So, so klaro na, so kla- klaro na lahat yun ngayon.
Pero, sir, uh, I'm, Your Honor, ang mangyayari po kasi, uh, we're addressing smuggling. When you see 'yung mga ganung items, sir, hindi smuggle ang, ang approach, sir, doon. Ang mangyayari, sir, sa amin, being D A, Food Safety Act lang, sir, hindi siya smuggling, sir. Pero, sir, kasi kung ngayon, ang pwede naman namin gawin, sir, yun, sir, pero Food Safety, sir, hindi siya smuggling siya kukunin. Food Safety, sir. Now, Food Safety, ilalabtest pa po natin yun, sir.
Teka muna, teka muna, okay, uh, okay, uh, the permits to import vegetables come from you, D A, right?
Yes, Your Honor.
Right? As a matter of policy, you know, you never issued a permit to import carrots from anywhere, tama?
Yes, Your Honor.
Right? Ayun na rule mo, kaya, general, general rule, 'yung tanong po kanina eh. Okay, so kontra, kontrapant yun, di, diba?
Sir, uh, under the law, sir, R A one zero eight four five, only B O C ang pwede, sir, sir. Uh, ang mandate ng smuggling, B O C, sir, wala po sa amin.
Yun nga, okay, yun na, yun na, yun na na raise mga kanina.
So, ang mangyayari po, like 'yung ginangay, ginagawa namin sa S T G E I ngayon, we inform, sir, ang B O C para sila, sir, ang magtake action po doon. Ganun po ang mangyayari. Now, para naman to save time, sir, ma-hold na natin, sir, yon. Now, para naman to save time sir, mahold na natin sir yun. Iatak muna sir ng DA yun, ng STG sir, ng Food Safety Act. Uh, huliin namin sir yun, ipo-post namin, ilalabtest namin while waiting sir. Uh, ng request namin for lowa sir sa BOC. So, BOC ang papasok sir. Pero kung ganun sir na makikita sir, hindi po pwedeng pumasok ang DA for smuggling sir yun sir. Kahit na alam na natin smuggling, only BOC po.
Oh nga, but you can do something at to hold the items, okay, okay.
That's why sir, uh, your honor, uh, yun nga po ang sinasabi namin to address this po is... Ma-institutionalize po 'yung STGE ay. Para meron po tayong pwedeng sisihin na office. Yan po ang office na ano, kasi ngayon po nagtuturuan kung saan galing po.
Kaya nga, in aid of legislation, ganda ng point pa ngayon. I've started my staff na to pursue your point, okay yun. Pero we are not facing a complete, ano eh, uh, void eh. Sabi mo nga, kaya nga ng BOC yun eh. So, back, ang bola back to BOC eh. Nasa inyo, no power, DTI, no power, uh, DA, limited... Sabi ko lang, limited power because they can use Food Safety Act to, to act also. But on the smuggling itself, walang, wala namang masasabing walang makaaksyon eh, merong makaaksyon. Tinuturo mo nga eh, BOC, so yun na nga, so balik, sa balik sa customs eh. Under present state of the law, you can act. Inang point nila, even against that box full of carrots na nakatatak, fresh produce from uh, China, nabawal. So, and I'm assuming you also know nabawal. Of course, you know nabawal, so, so yun ang tanong. Ang tanong pala babalik talaga sa BOC. Oh, so why the rampant and public and fearless display and sale of all of these uh, smuggled items?
Sir, we've issued several letter of authority sa mga markets na din naman. Uh, in fact, uh, umikot din kami sa mga palengke para huliin yan. Uh, and just to pursue 'yung point po ni Mam Agot. Mam, we, like, we actually accept information coming from uh, farmers cooperatives. Uh, pag meron po silang nakita, uh, imapatulang po kay Deputy Commissioner Ramiro. And we immediately request naman kay Commissioner to issue a letter of authority. Uh, we've actually uh, tried to coordinate with uh, mga farmers grupo natin. Uh, to be able to provide us some information. Uh, and, and with what uh, DTI and DA is saying, um... Pwede din naman pong ibato sa amin 'yung mga ganong information and we act on it accordingly naman sir. Uh, narerealize din naman namin na 'yung mandate is with us. Uh, and if, in, in the spirit of cooperation, kung meron pong mga ganong information from the private stakeholders or even from the government agencies, all they need to do is uh, put us to task. At uh, inaaksyo na naman po namin 'yung ganong mga reklamo sir.
Permission of Senator Pimentel, Senator President. Uh, again, coming from the law enforcement perspective, ano? Di ba meron plain view? Kung obvious na smuggle, wag na tayo magturaan kasi may citizens arrest nga eh. Pwede ng kompiskihan maski sino yan, bumuhan ng assistance from law enforcement, di ba? Asek Lassiste, pareho matangga ng law enforcement. Alam mo naman yun eh, so, sabi mo nga, obvious na smuggle, nandyan sa sidewalk, nandyan sa palengke. Sasabihin, tuturo mo pa sa Bureau of Customs? Hindi na, di ba? Even as a plain citizen, you can conduct arrest. And call for the assistance of the authorities. Yun talaga pwede magfile ng kaso, et cetera, et cetera. So, pag back and forth ang usapan, wala tayong pagkakatapusan. Kasi parang nakakita ka ng mariwana, dun sa divisoria, anong gagawin mo? Being a plain citizen? Susulat pa ng uh, magkaimpok panumowa with the Bureau of Customs or PNT or PIDEA, hindi na siguro. If you can, if you can take the risk of arresting and kompiskating, you do it, di ba? Kaya kung medyo alangan ka, tumawag ka na lang ng assistance. So, 'yung finger pointing, 'yung ping pong strategy, uh, I don't think should apply. In the meantime, sorry Ms. Agot, tawag akong tawag sa Miss Ani, baka ibang Ani 'yung naisip ko kanina. Ms. Agot, my bad. Anyway, di ba, dapat ganun? Your comment?
As your honor, actually, ganun na po ang ginagawa namin sir. Uh, even if wala pa 'yung BOC, we take action na po sir, oh.
Sabi mo kasi kanina, susulat pa eh.
No sir, uh, but for filing of cases nga sir ng smuggling, we need BOC talaga sir.
You can take action even as a plain citizen, not even as a member of DA.
Yes sir, actually, ganun sir ang nangyayari sir, 'yung mga previous nahuli sir namin. Ganun sir, nakapos na sir kami dun while waiting for the letter of uh, authority coming.
Let's add some of the strategies I pointed out earlier. That's just uh, demand reduction strategy. Ang mas importante, 'yung supply reduction. Yun 'yung from the source or 'yung bago lumabas ang customs, katin man 'yung supply. Kasi nakakahawa rin 'yung mga vendors, kasi mga namuhunan din yun eh. Waitingly or waitingly or unwittingly, na alam, uh, na smuggled 'yung tinitinda nila. Di ba? Kasi mga malilita lang yun eh. I'm not trying to justify, ano, pero, di ba dapat sa source na natin putulin para hindi na umabot sa market? That's the whole point, thank you.
Uh, tama si Senator Laxale. Parang ngayon, medyo dito sa lang sa kaso na to. Yeah, dito sa issue na pinag-usapan natin, mas mahalaga 'yung supply reduction. Di ba? Dahil kung wala, ay di walang bibili. Di ba? Unlike sa illegal drugs, gusto natin palakasin 'yung demand reduction. Kasi kung walang bibili, walang magbebenta. Pero ito, ano eh, hindi smuggle eh, mapibili. Ngayon, lalabanan ko 'yung ano, palalakasin ko na konti 'yung demand reduction. Tulad sa illegal drugs. For the information of everybody, and I'm sure the, the vegetable uh, farmers know. Ang ginagamit ng nagpapadala rito sa atin, China, uh, ano pa? Formal deheight ang tawag. Yun ang ginagamit nila, yun sa mga vegetables na inahayaan nating ma-smuggle dito at kinakain ng mga kapabayan natin. Katabibili na dahil tumatagal ng ilang buwan. Yung formal deheight na sinasaksa or ginagamit nila dyan sa mga vegetables na yan para sa kaalaman ng buong bansa. A cancer-causing substance sprayed on vegetables to keep them fresh. Ano di ba, kung saan pa ginagamit 'yung formal deheight na yan? It's used in building materials and household cleaning products. Clues at sa mga adhesives. Ganun, at hindi 'yung pinakakain natin. Itong, pinakakain ito mga smuggler na ito, sarap, sak-sak sa mga buhangan nila eh. Yung hindi smuggle nila eh, lapang kinikita gobyerno. Anyway, uh, may we be here again also, and may we hear from the, the Sanggoyan Panlalawigan ng Benguet. Uh, we have uh, all the way from uh, from Benguet, pumisita sa atin dito. Pakikira natin na masasabi ni Honorable uh, Ruben Pawad. And then also Honorable Robert Namoro.
Yes, sir. So, salamat na malaki sa... Sa pagpapatuloy ng senate hearing na ito. Kasi sa amin talaga, 'yung nasabi nung uh, representative ng mga vegetable trading traders. Ay, talagang hindi lang aray na ang mga farmers namin. More than two hundred fifty percent ang pag-increase na ng farm imports. Tapos ganito na, ay hindi pa mapipinta 'yung mga gulay nila. Wala na talaga, hindi namin alam kung mabubuhay pa 'yung industry namin sa Benguet. Tapos uh, uh, hindi lang, hindi lang kami ang maapiktahan dun. Sigurado pati kahit na hindi taga-Benguet. Una, dun ang gagaling, 'yung kinakain natin na pang chopsoy, pang pancit. Kami ang nagsusupply dun, pag namatay 'yung industry namin, di maapiktado tayong lahat. Tapos, pag wala ng trabaho 'yung mga tao dun, baka pati 'yung mga... Taga Bureau of Customs. Kung alam kong pumupunta sila sa Baguio, kasi Baguio nasa Benguet. Kung wala ng trabaho ang mga tao dun, ni sana sila pukha ng kakainin nila. Baka mga old up na rin sila, pagpunta ninyo dun, di, pati kayo maapiktukan kayo. Kaya, yun nga, uh, yung pakiusap lang namin na... Kung pwede sana, eh, gawin natin, ang dapat nating gawin para naman ma-stop na itong... Uh, ilegal na nangyayari sa ating bangalaan. Nagpapasalamat tayo sa sinet kasi at least may ganito nag-investigasyon. At least mga tao naman namin dun ay nakikita na may parte pala ng gobyerno na at least concerned pa rin sa kanilang mga... Uh, sa kanilang mga problema. At least may, may institusyon pa ng gobyerno na concerned sa... Sa mga problema ng mga tao natin sa mga probinsya. Salamat.
Thank you po, uh, Board Member Namoro, good.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you very much. We were able to attend the first senate hearing last Mar- uh, December. And we heard the same answers from the concerned agencies. After the senate hearing, we have observed that uh, naglay loh 'yung smuggling. But after one week or five days, rampant na ulit. So meaning, parang binabaliwala 'yung hearing natin. So again, we are appealing to the concerned agencies who are involved in uh... Uh, the processing of the vegetable products, not only vegetable but farm products. That please intensify our effort. Because uh, as Board Member Pawad said while ago, Benguet relies mainly on farming industry. Hindi lang 'yung mga farmers ang naghihirap, but also the other workers. Yung mga carrot washers, all, lahat ng mga nagtatrabaho sa mga trading areas, it would be affected, Mr. Chair. So please, we are again appealing to you, the concerned agencies, to please intensify. Just a clarification, Mr. Chair, if I may? This is uh, uh, clarity, uh, I just want to clarify. Uh, this is addressed to Asek Federico Lassiste Junior?
You, you can address it to me and...
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Last March nineteen, there was a dialogue between the League of uh... Associations and the Bureau of Plant Industry and the Department of Agriculture. And there were reasons given by Asek Lassiste. I just want to clarify, number three, as stated or uh, transcript of the uh, result of the dialogue. On the corruption issue, Lassiste admitted that corruption within the agency is observed. Like in the Bureau of Customs, in the Department of Agriculture. He also admitted that big-time personalities who are involved in the smuggling calls him every now and then for favors. He especially mentioned politicians. I just want to clarify this issue, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If this is really the statement of Honorable Lassiste during the uh...
The meeting?
Yes.
Uh, PPI, assista- uh, yeah, Asek uh, Lassiste, good.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, uh, na-mentioned ko po 'yung uh... Meron po kasing mga, nung mga hinuhuli ko sir, nung mga cases natin na nakaroon 2021. May mga tumatawag po kasi sa akin nun, uh, mga matatas na tao. And uh, pero ang ginawa ko po dun, uh, hindi ko na po uh, inactionan instead. Uh, uh, tinuloy pa rin namin 'yung paghuli at pagkaso.
Sino 'yung matatas na tao tumatawag sa'yo?
Sir, uh, maybe sa executive session, I can debunk sir the identity sir.
Hindi, uh, this is a hearing, hindi ka naman maipillar. Anyway, sige, write it down, write it down, give it to me.
Will do sir.
Uh, we will know how to handle it.
But national security ba 'yung issue, kaya nag-aano ka ng executive session?
So, pero hindi mo sinunod?
Hindi po sir, actually, on record naman sir, na tinuloy sir namin, lahat sir hinakot natin at tsaka kinal natin ng kaso sir. Actually, the case now sir...
You mentioned them in the meeting. You mentioned them, ano, in the meeting dun sa PPI?
Yes po sir. Nung sa Benguet Farmers, uh, ano sir, Benguet Farmers Dialogue, nabanggit ko yun sir. Even medyo mga ano sir na kilala natin, but uh, ganun po ang problem po natin. Not only dito sa sir, universe sir natin, but marami pong uh, ano po yun? Malalim na po 'yung uh, ugat nung problem po. Mala, malayo na po sila, just like in sa drugs po din sir. Uh, we're looking at mga, going after mga humahawak ng drugs. But we're not going after dun sa mga humahawak ng drug money sir. Ganun din sir po ang application namin sa smuggling sir.
Alright, uh, yeah, sir, sir, good.
Sir, politicians, how many?
Wala po sir.
How many? Sabi mo politicians eh?
Hindi po sir, uh, mga naka, ano rin sir, mga dating nakapwesto sir.
Okay.
Alright, any, anything else, uh? Board Member Namoro, o gusto mo ba sa'yo 'yung report?
No, it's okay, Mr. Chair, because uh, as per statement here, he mentioned politicians and other high-profile personalities. So, anyway, our good Asek has stated that uh, here really mentioned. But uh, anyway, it's up to us already, the senate investigation. So please dig deeper into this investigation, Mr. Chair.
Can you give me a copy of uh, of that report, the Chair?
Actually, Mr. Chair, this is a part of the report of uh, Mam uh, Agot Balano. But anyway, I will be forwarding a copy, Mr. Chair.
Okay, alright, so, um, well, I'm supposed to call on Senator Villar, but I don't see her on, on screen. So in the meantime, uh, while we're waiting for Senator Villar, um, Attorney Injom, who would you like to make a statement or... As she, go ahead, I'll suggest you to...
Well, sir, uh... We must be, the prop... I've been interfacing with government for about two decades, one and two decades.
Oh, why?
Uh, the problem is, it is really very rewarding to smuggle and import. And the reason for that is, the sector has been neglected. And the height of its negligence has been reached under this present dispensation of the Department of Agriculture. I am referring to Secretary Dar. Number one, he is really pro-importation. And the latest underscoring of that uh, stance is that he appointed an under-secretary for policy and planning. Who used to be the consultant of the Fishers and Aquaculture Importers Association headed by Jess Chang. And Jess Chang used to be the, or until recently when he became, he's a friend. The president of the Meat Importers and Traders Association. And therefore, as we can see, as long as the stance of the Department of Agriculture is pro-importation as backed up by the Department of Finance and by the National Economic Development Authority. Wala ho talagang pupuntahan 'yung sector? Talagang uh, eh, hayagan ho kami ho, kung ganito pa rin ho next time. Pagka ang secretary for agriculture ganito pa rin, eh, mag-iimporter na rin ho talaga kami. Wala ho, kakwento-kwentatong secretary na ito. Uh, yun lang po.
Sir, what is the name of the consultant of Secretary Dar who is...
He is now the under-secretary for uh, policy and planning. Vermin Adriano. He used to be senior consultant.
Under secretary?
Hmm, he used to be, he used to be senior consultant of uh, Secretary Dar. And uh, before he was senior consultant or before he was under-secretary based on a publication. He used to be the consultant, a consultant of uh, the Fishers and, and Aqua Importers Association. Whose head was, happened to be also the head of the Meat Importers and Traders Association, she Jess Chang. And it really, it will not engender the kind of confidence you would normally have with a secretary who's in charge with the development of the agricultural and fishery sector. Kaya ho, if, if after the elections, we will have, and if this fellow is reappointed, eh, mag-i-importer na lang ho kami. Yun ho ang signal eh. Wala ho talaga tayong ano, it is very reward. Smuggling and importation apparently is a very rewarding activity. Pagod na rin ho kami, tuin, magtu-tuin half decades na ho... Pagod na rin ho kami, tuin, magtu-tuin half decades na ho kami. And you can check naman, sir, you have oversight. Look at the laws. Hindi naman ini-implement eh. Look at Ahma. Look at the Magna Carta for small farmers, surprise support. Wala eh. Pero pagdating ho dun sa proposal, kung iba- iibabawasan 'yung taripa, eh mabilis pa sa alas kwatro sa Secretary Dar eh. San ho tayo pupulutin? We, we, we are entering a very delicate stage in world trade. May climate change na ho. Puro disruptions na ho ang mundo, and this fellow is making us more dependent on importation. Kaya ho, if the entire government wants to attain some credibility on agriculture, we need to review everything and implement the laws. Meron naman ho in fairness to the Senate and the House of Representatives. Ang daming na home bata si. Starting with Ahma, starting, I think Ahma was sponsored by the late Senator Angara. Hindi ho in pinatutupat eh. For example, I will give two provisions, very basic. Section thirteen of Ahma requires that there be a plan anchored on consultations with the sector. Wala. There, there are on file, the Department of Agriculture, meron though in supposedly in compliance of that. You talk to the sectors, walang plano. Sections thirty-eight to forty-five of Ahma requires that there be a national information network data so that you can update the plan, and part of it would be, would involve trade matters and smuggling. Eh sir, pag tinanungin eh, magkano ngayon ang manok sa America? Walang mga kasagot diya. Wholesale and retail. Something as basic as stated eh. Kung hindi ho kami nagreklamo dyan nung araw eh, niwala, niyung prices sa retail hindi alam eh. May problema ho eh. The fact that something, eh lo, Ahma, I think is nineteen ninety-seven. Ang daming provision, so niyan hindi pinatutupat. And that is the reason why it is very rewarding to go into smuggling and importation and we cannot solve this through mere interdiction, sir. Importante ho 'yun, interdiction or uh or uh law enforcement. Pero at the end of the day, we need to make our sector competitive. Palapitin muna man lang natin. Otherwise, sir, tuloy-tuloy ho 'yan. Kasi iba-iba ho ang pakataon ng tao, meron talaga halangang kaluluwa eh. I'm sorry, sir, for my blunt language, but uh I am tired. I am about to, I am requesting relief from my organization that the next time around, hindi na akong presidente, kasi I have failed. That is all, sir.
Yes, uh Attorney Injong, your uh statements are very much welcome. As far as the committee is concerned. As a matter of fact, while I was listening to you, I, I thought I was listening to myself during our dialogue meetings in uh going around the country, saying na pinakamagaling magpatupad ng mga batast, ay 'yung gubawa ng mga batast. Because uh we really think na hindi pinapatupad at hindi ini-implement na maayos 'yung mga batast eh. Yun po sinasabi namin na kaya po eh yun ang mga during our dialogue meetings sa nation night, that's what you're saying. And you are practically, you are practically uh saying so also. And thank you for being very blunt about other, the, the other matters, especially the revelations about importers. Eh kaya ano mo pala, gusto magimport pati 'yung kalunggong eh? Hindi ba? Ambira. Eh now, I, I, I know. Eh puro
Karapalan kasi
Nakapaligid dun sa Agri- the Department of Agriculture eh.
You can take a look at that article, sir, with your respect. You can take a look. Naka-published naman ho eh. Hindi naman, hindi naman ho tinaku eh. Hindi ko sabihin, sir, kung ikaw maayos kang secretary, bakit mo appoint 'yun? How can we, as producers, have confidence? Hindi ko sinasamin saan bahay 'yung mama. Pero 'yung appoint, pero delikadesa na lang. Bakit naman mag-aappoint ka ng consultant ng importers? Papaano naman kami makikipagugnayan sa depart- kaya hindi na ho ko na kami ho as an organization, our board decided, hindi na ho kami nakikipagugnayan sa depart- Secretary Dar. Kasi alam namin walang pupuntahan. Eh pagka ang secretary of agriculture ho kanito uli, o siya uli, eh kawawaho tayo in an age of disruptions, climate change and trade disruptions. Kawawaho itong bansana to. I am sorry to say, sir. And uh they are blatant ho ang uh failure to enforce the laws. Kaya ako tayo nandidito. Wala ho sistema eh. Data lang wala eh. Data.
Alright, well, um mukhang imposible na siya uli after June thirti. Nevertheless, kung ito'y na lumabasin 'tong mga revelations na ito during uh our time in the commission and appointed, eh hindi dapat na akong permyo. Eh mahuli lumalabas 'yung mga ganitong impormasyon eh, ano problema eh. Anyway, uh ah, okay. Uh Senator Villar, are you ready now? Before I recognize uh Chairman Ordones? Wala eh. So, okay, um uh, sir, Chairman ng Allianza Agricultura, Che- uh uh Che- former Secretary Ordones, go ahead.
Thank you, Senator Soto. First of all, we the farmers and fisher folk organized in two thousand three. Thank you for your uh privileged speech on anti-smuggling. Now, Mister Injong is our spokesperson. About his with the racers, we are thirty-eight organizations across all sectors. And I'd like to tell you about the private sector rule. Is that all we will do to uh our friend Agut Balanoi? Just let her cry and nothing happens? I'd like to tell you where the private sector can come and help. Because we want to talk about success, not theory, but success. And that success happened twice with the private sector was involved. And what happened then? We were part of an oversight committee and the customs commissioner had to meet us, departments, four departments, every month. So, walang lusot. Misski, it pressure ya, walang lusot cha. And that's official present and directed. Then they abolished it because we bought a congressman out there using it. And I asked the secretary Reyes, Baket, Malakay Orient, because we caught the son of the, one of their secretaries and a congressman who she like. We restored it under, you know. And it was abolished. By whom? By Mister Laxon's best friend, Faidon. Faidon, he abolished it. And I did a memorandum on the side so that we get data to find the smugglers. And he was killed three days after, after, and I was gonna get killed after that. But I was not killed because they still have held the, the, the information. What's my recommendation, sir? Mister Gordon talked and talked the last time, he's not here. But recommendation, sir, is you must not let Agut Balanoi go through this thing again. And what's my suggestion, sir? These suggestions to Mr. Pimentel, yourself, are all correct. Do you think we don't know that? We know that, right? Does it take a senate hearing to do that? And after you do it, does it take three more months? Because, sir, if you just uh use your persuasive power to have the previous committee that succeeded twenty-five percent and thirty-one percent reduction to resume with private sector, you do that. For example, you know, the head of the Bureau of Plant Industry is a, is a barangay captain from Davao. Fine, I like him, correct? And now you cannot convince someone, and that someone tells us when carrots are sold publicly, he'll go out to put it again. Sir, do you know what smuggling is? You don't need that. It is, as Mister Laxon said, it's obviously illegal. And if you want to use your common sense, just go to the importers of the carrots and find him. They won't even think of that. Why? Government doesn't know smuggling as much as private sector does. And when they know it, they're in cahoots. I'd like to tell you for the record, Mister Laxon and Mister Soto, when you clean up customs, please clean up the Department of Agriculture. They're in cahoots. They're in cahoots, okay? Agriculture is not gonna say, they're in cahoots. And the reason I say that is because when they offered me to join, they said, you can touch phyto-sanitary, you cannot touch, you cannot touch undervaluation, underweighting, misclassification because you're not allowed. So last week, sir, in anger, the agriculture said, we fed up. We're forming our own, and we formed it last week, sir, okay? But why do I talk to the Senate? Because actually, the Senate does brilliant job, but actually, we can get from your wisdom and we can do it. And we don't have to wait for a senate hearing, we can do it ourselves, sir. So I'd like to state this, it is very easy to have, to fight smuggling. Do you know why we know? Because I was in two groups that cut it by twenty-five percent and thirty-one percent. And both times, they canceled us because we were successful. Mister Faidon, the friend of Mister Laxon, is the one that really abolished us during his administration because he knew we're succeeding and then they should have dared to kill my partner, di ba? So I'm saying, sir, that actually, after this, if we don't have this private sector involved in this, correct? We'll go to another hearing and we'll wait and wait. They say wait for the new government. Every day, Miss uh, Miss Balanoi, Agut Balanoi is suffering every day. I don't want to wait for the new government. I want to state that you, sir, Senator President Soto, gave the privilege speech and that ignited all of us. That is why we got courage. So, sir, I'd like to end by saying this. All the things that have said here should be implemented. Unfortunately, if we rely the executive to wait and they're making money by waiting and not following, they're making money, and election smuggling goes up, as we know, as we know. The farmers are suffering. So my request, sir, is that use your persuasive power to let them have this committee composed of four departments, not one. The Department of Agriculture has one, all government, for God's sake, what do they know? E- e- even the person suggesting he work for food security for carrots, are you, are you, do you not understand that it's easy to catch them? Because the moment they get there, as Mister Laxon said, you can in many ways, LGU, go to the person imported, and dali-dali na, they don't even know what to do. And they won't even allow us to join. So we, in a unanimous decision, said, we are gonna have our own agriculture shoot inside, inside the legislated Agri- or Fishers Council, and it was approved unanimously, sir. So that's my plea. Please use your persuasive power uh to make sure that after today, we have such a committee with private sector, because, sir, we know smuggling much more than many government people, right? The persons here said, gonna after food security because cars are being sold in Madagas. For God's sake, don't we know how to solve this problem? I mean, if that's the best you can do, maybe you need help from the private sector. So that is my request, sir, that you help us in the private sector who know smuggling, who've succeeded and are being tinapon sa basura. And when you couldn't have customs, clean up agriculture because they're in cahoots. For the record, sir, in the second group which filed on abolition, okay? Justice, finance, and in this you came. Agriculture did not come. That's on record. Why? Because they're scared, because they're in cahoots. So I'd like to say that, sir, when you clean up customs, clean agriculture. Now, agriculture very good, ninety-five percent are good. But the five percent are bad, are powerful, and they're killing the farmers and fisher folk. Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, uh President, uh Chairman of the Allianza Agricultura, uh Mister Ordones, thank you. Yes? Uh you practically persuaded us to use our persuasion with the, with the private sector. We will do that. We will do that. Uh
Thank you.
Uh Brad, oh, um Chairperson Chesterton, uh of the National Federation of the Agfarmer's Incorporated, go ahead.
Yes, uh good afternoon, uh Senate President Soto and uh to all the senators and participants. Uh Mister, Mister Chair, I'd just like to affirm uh our good Senator Laxon have said a while ago, yes, uh the, 'yung uh Milang, no, uh since early January, uh nagkaroon of understate of Kalamitin na po because uh nineteen villages are affected and uh also the uh Matalam and Kabakan, uh these three are from uh North Cotabato, so they really need the assistance of the Department of Agriculture. But uh Mister Chair, uh with the presence of uh Asek uh Lassiste, uh uh Mister Chair, baka pwede po natin silang uh tanungin. Uh I think this, ano, no, uh I got this referen- reference is from uh uh Asek Lassiste Junior, 'yung four points niya. Uh actually, these are, ano, uh smuggling efforts uh done by Department of Agriculture and DTI. So four points po 'yun, gusto lang natin malaman what happened, kasi ano naputo eh, uh three months to six months naputo nangyari, ano pong action na gawa nila? Number one is 'yung confiscation of more or less one hundred million worth of smuggled agri fisheries product, including suspected ASF-infected pork in Abotas uh on May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one. So almost one year na po 'yan. Twelve referred bonds. Number two, seashores of smuggled red onion in the port of Subic worth one hundred one million pesos in a series of operation conducted by the STG July eight to nine, twenty twenty-nine, uh twenty twenty-one. Twenty-nine referred bond po, Mister Chair. Number three, seashore of five thousand six har- uh six hundred carton boxes of Macarel uh mis-declared uh as rounds, uh round scald fish in a CW sa ano po to warehouse po ng pulilan bulakan on September one. And lastly, number four, 'yung confiscation po of mis-declared assorted fresh vegetables on the port of Subic, October eleven, twenty twenty-one. Ito po, ano rin po, ang napakaraming referred bond, lima po, and value of fifteen million pesos. So ano po nangyari dito sa apat na uh joint effort ng ating uh DA and uh DTI? And lastly, Mister Chair, uh meron pong recommendation, 'yung DI dun sa Bureau uh BOC na uh papalakasin po nila 'yung second border uh inspection. Bakit po second border? Hindi, bakit po hindi first border? Sana po marinig natin dahil lahat po ng bansa, first border po ang binabantayan. Tayo lang po ang gustong mag-implement na second border ang babantayan. Thank you, Mister Chair, President.
Thank you, Chester. Um respond, uh Asek Lassiste.
Uh yes, Your Honor, uh first, 'yung sa one hundred million na ASF nakuhas sir nung uh sometime, uh May seven, May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one sa Abotas. Sir, uh for info, na-file na po 'yung case sa DOJ for uh economic sabotage. And uh lahat po ito eh, na-condem na po, uh nasunog na po dun sa Greenleaf. Uh Greenleaf disposal facility sa Porak Pampanga. Lahat po 'yun na, na-dispose na po. As to sa onions po, na nakuha din nung uh July, all of them were already uh uh disposed na rin po, uh na-confiscate na po natin 'yun with through uh BOC. And uh nag-issue na rin po ang uh BOC for condemnation, that's why na, nasunog na rin po 'yun. And uh pertaining to the five thousand boxes ng uh BIFAR BIFAR uh product, uh yun po eh, na-adjudicate na po. Uh kasi under the BIFAR law, merong adjudication provision po ang uh BIFAR. So, nerequire po ng BIFAR po 'yun uh to pay uh more than uh 'yung value po nung uh babayaran po ng importer. So I think uh times five pa po 'yung binayaran po ng importer. As to 'yung uh huli sir na October na vegetable, uh pending pa po 'yun for uh condemnation, waiting pa po kami for uh uh processing po ng disposal po.
Uh Mister Chair, uh
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh yes, uh how about po 'yung ano, 'yung uh 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 gusto ng DA mangyari, they want to join uh with uh uh BOC na babantayan lang po 'yung uh second border inspection. Bakit po tayo hindi katulad ng ibang bansa na first border po ang babantayan? Kasi naman po, pagka nakalabas po ng first border 'yan, eh wala na to, medyo mahirapan na tayo. We need more manpower to supervise the second border. Kaya we really, ano, hindi po namin maintindihan 'yan kasama nila Attorney Bong Injong and uh Chairman Sendo, na bakit ano, ini-insist 'yung second border? Dapat first border. Maybe they can explain, Mister Senate President. Thank you.
Yes, bakit na, uh Asek Lassiste?
Sir, uh for reason, sir, na 'yung sa first border and second border, may problem po sa space. Uh I think uh BOC will agree with us. Wala, sir, po tayong enough space para po sa pagbabaser ng mga items na 'yun, sir. Uh kaya ang practice po ngayon dito is after the first border, sa second border po ang one hundred percent uh uh inspection. Ang problem lang po, hindi na po area po ng BOC 'yun, kasi wala nga pong space. And uh yun sigurang
Space, sir, dinami na din, uh space. Uh ibig nyo sabi ng space, uh gaano kalaki ba 'yung first border? Physical ba 'yun?
Sir, I think BOC could uh better explain itself.
Attorney Maronila.
Thank you, before you uh you uh explain, ano. Sa akin, it makes a lot of sense, na mas marami nagbabantayan, mas maganda. Especially 'yung talagang local stakeholders, talaga 'yung pagpapatayan nila, na hindi makapasyo smuggling. Patayin 'yung payagan.
Yeah, yeah.
Parang napaka-commissed dun. Mas mapapatili pa trabaho ninyo.
Sir, sa Bureau of Customs, so welcome naman po. In fact, we had a meeting last uh month with the farmers coming from uh Nueva Isigan. And uh nag-request sila if they can join uh our process. And okay naman po sa amin, sir.
So starting tomorrow, papayagan nyo sila?
Kung gusto po nila, sir, kung sumama sila, sir, sa Bureau okay naman po sa
Can you respond?
Magpandala po sila ng rep sa examination areas natin.
Sir, matagal na 'yan.
Sir, matagal na yan. Storyan na yan, in fairness to Attorney Maronila, wala pa si dyan, at ganyan yung problema na yan, kanya lang. Uh, yung reasoning na kulang sa space. Granting, granting recent history na lang po, two years ago pa ako nagbigay ng pera si President Duterte para dyan. At considering naman po na dalawang taon tayong pandemic, malukwag ng galaw, dapat nakakitan ho sila ng facility ho kasi yan, inspection area. At tsaka ho, puwetin naman ho na, hindi namang kailangan one hundred percent of all the items. Ang dyan ho papasok yung importance ng data, international data, kasi ho, alam ninyo, ang isang history ho dyan, si Congressman, si, si sa agap po, si, hindi po, si Nicky Breoneso.
Nicky Breoneso.
Two thousand five, two thousand six. Pinayagan ho siya magdala ng mga tao dyan sa Bureau of Customs. I think yung grupo niya ho spent nine million or ten million pesos for two or three months. Wala ho silang mahuhuli, kasi wala ho data. Hindi nila alam kung alin yung tutukoyen. Kaya hindi ho puwetin na physical presence lang ng law enforcers. You really need data. Eh, ako, yung mga napubwisit sa akin si Department of Agriculture nung araw, kasi data ako ng data. Eh, later all lang nila naappreciate. Sabi ko, kanya kayo walang credibility. Kahit data, wala kayo eh. Trade data, pero later naman ho, merong efforts nung panuon, last administration sana. May mga movement forward naman to, kanya lang. No, after, after nung nawala, yun nga ho, hindi ho, kasi institutionalize. Depende ho dun sa tao na nakupo, kung medyo maayos ayos. Maganda. It is important to ma-institutionalize natin, especially the data, kailangan published. Kailangan nakapublish, ano presyo, para ma-minimize ho natin, kasi negosyo talaga yun na pera eh. The only way we can uh, minimize or interpret, you, you really need a data system, and it is in the law. Ang problema ho, ayaw ng PA, kasalanan, it is, it is an institutional sin of the Department of Agriculture na hindi pinaglaban yan. Twenty, twenty-five, or twenty-six years after Agma, wala pa rin. Hindi pa huwag ikanaihiyan ng Department of Agriculture as an institution. Hindi pa tinu, hindi niyo pa, hindi ko sabihin, kung hindi mabigyan ng budget, maintindihan ko pa yun eh. Pero hindi naman namin nakita sa sektor, kahit itanong niyo yung grupo ng bayan niyan sa Agrokykultura, sa Sinan, Alianza Agricultura, kahit minsan hindi namin nakita na natingay ang Department of Agriculture tungkol sa data, tungkol sa plano, basic. Mga patayang galaw ng isang departamento na responsable, dapat para sa ikauunlad ng agriculture at pangisdaan. Hindi ginagawa at sokdulan narating yan, dito sa current dispensation of the Department of Agriculture. Si Sekretary Dar, ayaga ko sinasabi, lalong nawala eh. Kasi walang tiwala lalo eh, nung yung mga nakaraang sekretario, pwede ko pang sabihin na may mga sektor na nakikinabang. And Mister Senate President, ang achievement ni Sekretary Dar, for the first time in two and a half decades at that I have been interfacing, na-unite ang agricultural sektor, ang fisher, united kami. Dati dati kasi ang nabibira lang pa isa-isang sektor eh, kaya hindi mabuo. It is only now.
United against the Department of Agriculture?
Yes, you can ask Raoul Monte Mayor, you can ask uh, uh, Chester, you can ask uh, Ernie Ordonez, you can ask Sendo, Rosento, so. They know, dati dati hindi nagkakasama dahil hindi babanatan yung rice. Chicken lang at tsaka pork. Pinging, inararo ho eh, inararo, bigas. Mais, yung mais ngayon, may proposa na naman, bigas, mais, ista, manok, baboy. Meron ding proposa para sa sugar, kulay. San ho tayo pupulutin bilang bansa? Ang lagi hong sinasabi, huwag kayo mag-alala, kasi look at Singapore, Singapore is ninety percent dependent on food imports, and yet it is food secure. Yan ang sinasabi nila nung yung, yung undersekretary ngayon na ano, may column yun sa Manila Times.
Eh, walang lupa Singapore eh.
Yun na nga ho.
Ang lapad-lapad ng Pilipinas.
Yun na nga ho, hindi naman ho nila matatanggi yan, may column mo sa Manila Times, yung ano niya, undersekretary niya eh. Na dating consultant ng mga importer eh. Kanya ho, talagang nasalaula ho, ayang, ayang kategorikal, makimanda na yung mga hayop na yan, pero talaga hong salaula eh.
Attorney, you keep mentioning data, no?
Kami ganyan din lang, naging mapapandemic, mapakung ano, data-driven tayo dapat, agree? Alam niyo, ito, ay, subject validation, yung figures, ano. Yung United Nations, diba meron silang data niyan eh, yung mga trading partners natin like US, Japan, South Korea. Diba lumalabas? Yeah, China and US palang, come up with eighty-two, but palang, anong difference siya, nawala sa atin, eighty-six billion. China palang yan. Because of the difference in the date, export data of China to the Philippines and the import data of the Philippines from China. Siyempre, lakinawawala, sa tax, tax palang yun. So yun, the absence of data, you know, talagang uh, ominous. Kanya ho rewarding nga ho yung importation and smuggling. It is the preferred, yun ho si Sekretary Dar for what intention purposes is the undersecretary for importation of the National, of the NEDA, and the National and the Department of Finance, I am sorry to say. He is not, eh, he is not our secretary.
Mister Chairman, in the interest of truth, because there's a lie that's being peddled here, no?
What?
May I say something? In the interest of truth, because we don't want lies in the sanity ring, alright? Okay, Mr. Laxton is correct, when they want space, they want more people, they denied it, alright? Now, as the one who got private industry to get this privilege of inspecting, I asked Commissioner Guerrero, give the same to agriculture, he didn't answer. After eight months, I wrote the Assistant Secretary of Finance, Dominguez saw it and called Commissioner Guerrero. And said, call Ernie, cause Ernie knows smuggling. He never called me. After the sanity ring, I called him up, I said, is it true that Dominguez called you personally to talk to me? Said, yes. Why didn't you talk to me? Said, because I already talked to someone else. You see, Mister. But, look, I think you're a good man, but.
No, 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 wait. Ano, no sinagot sayo?
He said, you already talked to someone else, but he gets told he has to talk to me, I'm the one who knows, correct? Okay, no, no, I don't wanna fight him, I'm just telling this, no? He's probably good man, he's, he's, he's controlled by other forces, that's why we need the private sector to come in with your persuasion powers, no? And I'm just saying this, sir, no? They treat agriculture like dogs, because in the sea where I was, and Mr. Laxton knows this, I've seen cement, et cetera. They give everything, agriculture, they give nothing, and that's what I asked, that's why Dominguez got mad, they said, Ernie's just asking for the same privilege you gave in this agriculture, talk to Ernie, never talk to me, right? Okay, now, I'd like to say this, no, I don't blame him no man, because they're other forces, that's why we need your persuasive power to get private sector, like, you know, Miss Balanoi, and us to move in, no? I'm just saying this, no, Mister Miravilla, you know this, ah, you're saying that it's allowed, you know, come on, come on, let's tell the truth. On December one and a half years ago, I talked to you, and you were supporting me, and they didn't pay attention to you, right? Tell the truth, right? They didn't want us to do what Mr. Laxton wants us to do, which private sector does, which is inspect, right? Okay, I mean, ayoko na magsising ng ano, yung Senate, I'm not saying you lying, Mister Miravilla, but you're saying, pwede, pwede. Frankly, one year and a half ago, you talked to me personally, you said it would be fine, they never did it. And I, you know that, I follow up with you, right? And for me, for Dominguez, to tell Guerrero to talk to me, he has talked to me for ten months, and then he admits it on the phone after the hearing, says something. He's probably good man, but he's controlled by other forces, that's why we cannot rely on government alone eh. Especially if it's controlled by customs and DA, they're in cahoots, you know what I mean? We need private sector with your persuasion powers to move in, so that Miss Balanoi doesn't have to beg and wait and wait. I mean, kawahoan naman siya, no? Let them bring in a committee that I've recommended, that is ready, proven. So I'd like to say this, no, for the record, it is not true that pwede, they, they denied us what they gave in the sea. That's why I'm saying, sir, agriculture is treated like very bad. Whereas in the sea, maybe they're scared they have money, right? They treat them very well, I know both sides, diba? Outside of cement in six countries, I know that, but my heart is agriculture, because they are not treated properly, they're treated very badly, and they're suffering. The rich like cement, they can, they can suffer a bit more, ayaman eh. But a farmer, you make them suffer, they go hungry, they die, right? So I, I'd like to say, thank you very much for this opportunity, thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, Raoul Monte Mayor po.
Raoul, oh, yes, go ahead, Raoul.
Yes, ma- maraming salamat po for inviting us again, and I'd like to shift a little bit the discussion to rice naman, pero very similar po yung mga issues, no? Meron po kong hinanda na maikling uh, presentation, if you will allow me to, to share it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, sir, okay. Yung kanina po kasi yung usapan natin yung data, no, tsaka yung, so, uh, sa, sa bigas po, merong apat na major categories kasi ng imports, meron yung palay, and that is mostly seeds, ang code niya ten O six ten. And then meron po yung pinawa, yung parang binalatan lang na pa, na palay, hindi, hindi pila kines. And then there is the semi-milled or holy-milled rice. Ito po yung madalas natin ang katid, ito yung may mga five percent, twenty-five percent. At yung pang-apat, yung, yung durug na bigas, at karamihan yan ay pang feeds, hindi pang tao, no? Tinignan ko po yung data ng ITC para, para po tong pump trade, yung sinasabi ni Senator Laxton kanina na merong international sources of import data export. Ito po lumalabas, karamihan sa inangkat natin nung twenty-twenty from Vietnam ay nasa yung mga semi-milled and holy-milled rice now. Pero, pagdating po ng bigas sa atin, ang classification po ng BOC, broken rice, no? Nakikita po ni yung napakalaking discrepancy. Paglabas sa Vietnam, at yung data po ng ITC ay galing po sa government of Vietnam eh. Lumalabas siya as semi-milled rice. Tapos, pumapasok sa atin, broken rice for feeds, no? At uh, makikita rin natin sa total, there is about a three hundred thousand ton discrepancy in the volume. Maybe that is a smuggled volume, hindi ko na masasabihan, pero ang matitiyak po yung misclassification ng bigas na pumapasok. And then I did a further analysis, hindi ko sinunod yung BOC classification. Tinignan ko na lang yung description ng imports, kasi nakalagay po dun kong five percent ba, ten percent o broken. Pag ginawa ko po yun, medyo tumatama na siya sa ITC data, konti na lang yung discrepancy. Ang malaking discrepancy ay pagdating sa BOC. Uh, pagdating sa twenty-twenty-one, medyo nabawasan na po yung problema, but you can still see that two million tons went out of Vietnam as semi-milled rice. Pero pagdating po dito sa atin, eight hundred seventy-two thousand tons yung broken rice. So, ay, uh, and, and wala na ITC data, kasi wala pa silang data ng twenty-twenty-one. Pero if I do the analysis based on the grade nung rice, dapat two point eight million tons po yung semi-milled rice. Pero, ang malaking bahagi niyan ay pumapasok pa rin as broken rice. Bakit po importante yan? This is an example of an actual shipment in December twenty-twenty-one from Vietnam. Four thousand tons, eighty thousand bags, and napakaliwanag po sa description, five percent broken. Pero, saan nila classify sa BOC? Nilagay nila under ten O six forty ninety, which is broken rice with a declared value of three hundred sixty-two dollars. Ang reference price o yung basehan na presyo ng BOC sa broken rice ay three hundred eight dollars lang. So pwedeng sabihin yun nung importer, ay hindi ito overvalued, ay hindi ito undervalued, kasi mas mataas pa nga yun, de-declared yung halaga, kaysa yung BOC reference price na three O eight. Pero, kung ito po ay clasify as five percent broken, na dapat naman, ang reference price po niyan ay four hundred dollars per ton, undervalued po yung shipment, no? Pero, sa computer o sa system ng BOC, hindi po ito ma- flag as an undervalued shipment because it was classified in the wrong tariff line, no? At ang nalugi po ng gobyerno sa signal transaction na ito, four million eighty-two thousand pesos, isang shipment lang po ito. Uh, January twenty-twenty-one, just uh, I have two examples, basmati from India, ito po yung pinakamahal na bigas galing sa India, twenty-four tons lang. Napakaliwanag naman sa description niya, basmati rice. Pero, nung clasify ng tiga BOC, BOC, nilagay niya sa parboiled rice, hindi ko lang kung bakit, no? Uh, at yung reference price nito ay naglalaro ng eight hundred to one one ninety. Mas mababa pa rin yung declared niya na seven seventy. Pero dapat ito nilagay siya sa under the heading for basmati rice na one thousand two hundred twelve dollars per ton. Napakalayo po nung declared value, seven seventy lang. Dito ang lugi ng gobyerno, two hundred forty-one thousand dollars, uh, two hundred forty-one thousand pesos. So, malaki po yung effect ng misclassification, hindi natin alam sinong nagkamali rito. Nag-mis-declare ba ang import, ang importer, mali yung sinabi niyang bigas niya? Or nagkamali ang tiga BOC sa classification, no? In either case, lugi ang gobyerno. Ngayon, kahit na sabihin natin po na tama yung classification, may problema pa rin tayo. Kasi kahit nilagay nila sa tamang tariff line, pwede pa rin sila mag-declare ng mas mababang presyo, at ito po ang nangyayari. Lumalabas po ITC data compared sa de-declared ng mga importers, on the average from Vietnam, twenty-four percent discrepancy in value, no? And if we do that for the whole of twenty-twenty, ang, ang nalugi po sa gobyerno base sa analysis panamit from the misdeclaration and undervaluation, four point three billion pesos po, malaki pong halaga. At ang karamihan niyan lang gagaling dun sa five percent broken rice, three point three billion po ang nawawala sa atin. Makikita niyo, on the average po, bawat tunelada, limang, limang libong peso po ang undervaluation na nawawala sa ating gobyerno. Kaya, ito po ay hindi bago, since twenty nineteen, nire-report na namin ito sa BOC. Marami na kami mga suggestion sa kanila kung paano ayusin ito. Dahil ang tinatamaan po rito yung magsasaka, hindi lang ang gobyerno, dahil yang, yang four point three million na yan, under sa RTL. Mapupunta rin sana yan sa mga magsasaka, pero hindi po napunta sa magsasaka, napunta sa bursa ng importer o kaya ng tiga BOC. No, napakalaking halaga. Sa, sa sistema po ng BOC, ayon dito sa memorandum of Commissioner Guerrero, they are in fact authorized to question the valuation of importers now on the basis of section seven O seven of the CMTA, no? Kasi ang sinasabi ko minsan ng BOC, our hands are tied because under the CMTA and WTO rules, we have to honor the transaction value as it decl, as it is declared by the importers, no? Pero, napakaliwanag po sa CMTA, na kung napakalaki naman yung difference ng declared value o transaction value, doon sa reference price ng BOC, pwede ho nilang i-question yun, at kung hindi sila makakuha ng tamang sagot, pwede nilang i-release yung shipment, pero dapat mag-post ng band yung importer, equivalent to the tariff differential. Yun po ang isa sa gusto namin mangyari sana, na mukhang hindi na kailangan. So just two, and my, I have just two uh, lights, lights left. Itong recommendation po, twenty nineteen po namin nirecommend yan kay Sekretary Dominguez, kay Sekretary Dar, kay Commissioner Guerrero, nagkaroon kami ng dalawat meeting, pero sad to say, marami po paho ang hindi na nagakawa, no? Unang problema po, tinapayagan pa rin nila yung importer na hindi sabihin kung ano yung variety o grade ng bigas na pilapaso. Siyempre, pag hindi natin alam yung variety on grade, hindi natin matutukoy kung saang HS code ilalagay yun, at ano yung reference price niya. So nagkakaroon ngayon ng discretion yung examiner. Ilalagay niya yan sa magandang HS code na hindi tatamaan ng undervaluation yung importer. Hanggang ngayon, meron pahuyan problema yan. Pangalawang problema po, paano malalaman ng BOC lang yan na yung din-declare ng importer? Ay tama, kasi makasinabi ng importer. Ay tama, kasi makasinabi ng importer, broken rice 'yan, pero actually, semi-milled rice, no? Kailangan merong kapasidad ng BOC para i-check kung totoo 'yung sinasabi ng importer and para'ting ino-complain ng BOC, wala daw silang technical expertise, no? Pero siguro madaling, madaling gawan ng parang niya na by picture po, madaling malaman ano 'yung kaibahan ng five percent broken at saka 'yung twenty-five percent broken, hindi po imposible. Pangatlo, ito po medyo masama loob namin dito dahil sinabi na namin na doon sa memorandum ni Commissioner Guerrero, sana nandun po ang lahat ng klase ng bigas na ini-import at kompleto 'yung reference price, no? But in twenty twenty-one, nine percent of the shipments and eight percent of the import value, wala pong reference price. Ito 'yung mga bigas galing China, some of the rice from India and Pakistan. Wala po, wala pong reference price ko, wala pong basehan 'yung BOC para sabihin under-valued 'yan o hindi. At ang masaklap pa po nito, pagdating ng September twenty twenty-one, tinanggal pa nila 'yung reference price ng bigas with ten to fifteen percent broken, no? Imbis na takpan 'yung mga kulang, nilagdagan 'yung kulang, na tinanggal 'yung reference price ng ibang klasing bigas. Hindi po namin alam kung bakit, no? Ah, at ah, nag-i-import pa naman tayo ng ten percent and fifteen percent broken, no? And then number four po, ah, ensure na tama 'yung classification at itatama nila sa tamang reference price, no? Sa twenty-one, twenty twenty-one po, halos one-fourth po ng inangkat natin ng semi-milled rice, tulad nung napakitita ko kanina, ay napasok as broken rice. Pagdating ng twenty twenty, ay mas malalapa, seventy-four percent po ay misclassified as broken rice. Freight and insurance, no? Kasama po 'yan sa tariff eh, ang tariff kasi FOB plus freight and insurance. Twenty percent po ng shipments nung twenty twenty-one, equivalent to fifteen percent ng pinasok. Zero po ang de-declared nilang freight, lumipad po 'yung bigas sa atin na walang gastos, no? Papano po nangyari yun, no? Sinang binapu namin 'yan sa BOC? Dapat sitahin niyo 'yan kasi imposible naman na napakababa 'yung freight. At talagang binababaan nila 'yung freight para maka menos sa buwis, no? Pero hanggang ngayon po malaking problema po 'yan. And then application ng correct tariff rate in twenty nineteen po, 'yung mga imports from India, Pakistan, and China, pinatawan ng thirty-five percent, imbis na fifty percent. Hanggang ngayon, hindi pa namin alam kung nakolekta na 'yung kulang na hundred fifty-one million. At sino ba 'yung mga BOC examiner na gumawa nung mistake na 'yan, dapat panagutan nila, no? Sayang din yun, hundred fifty-one million, no? And then number seven, sinasabi po namin sa kanila, sana merong automatic system na kung ang isang importation ay less than the reference price by a certain percentage, let's say ten percent, automatic questionable ngayon, no? Kasi ang ginagawa po ng BOC ngayon, sabi nila, oh, under-valued ka, pakita mo 'yung papeles mo, pinakita 'yung invoice, o meron pa lang invoice, o sige, labas ka na. Wala pong mga question, no? Ah, is a, even in fact, the BOC memorandum says, they can question the valuation and require a bond, a bond if deemed necessary. Hindi po namin alam, ilan ba 'yung pinapost nilang bond, no? Wala pong maliwanag, and ang, ang suspect sa po namin kakaunti, no? At 'yung nangyayari po, post audit 'yung sistema, no? Hinuhuli nila 'yung nakalusot, imbis na pinipigilan nila na huwag makalabas sa pier, no? By the time huwag nakalabas ng pier 'yan, wala na, hindi na natin matitrace 'yung bigas eh, or parme, o gulay, no? Kaya na benta na eh, no? Mahirap ng habuli niyan, then kaso pa 'yan. And then finally, kung may mapa- mapatunayan na may nagkamali o nagkagawa ng kalukohan, dapat may sanction para maliwanag na hindi pwede 'yan, no? Ah, sabi nila, meron na daw silang kinasuhan ng mga importers for undervaluation in twenty nineteen. Hanggang ngayon, wala po kaming balita kung anong nangyari, bati sa random audit, no? Samantala, kung, kung sisitahin nila 'yung valuation at the time of entry, napakadali naman dahil merong declared value, merong reference value. Pwede mo nang sabihin ka agad, under-valued 'yan. Kung hindi mo mapa-explain 'yan, mag-post ka ng bond, bago pa lumabas 'yung bigas sa pier, no? Pero ito, ang dami-daming bigas lumalabas sa pier, then makakaroon sila ng panguhuli, may kaso, walang masadong nangyayaring resulta, so. So yung pong kwan po namin sa bigas, matagal na po ito, tatlong taon na, no? Ah, mukhang hindi pa rin nasusolusunan ito, ah, hopefully makatulong po 'yung Senate dito. Salamat po.
Thank you also, Mr. Montemayor. Yeah, go ahead, Senator Lacson.
Yeah, i-plus ko lang 'yung kaninang sinabi ko, twenty nineteen data ito, start United Nations World Bank's World Integrated Trade Solution. Between two countries lang po itong sir, uh, president, China lang saka US. And nasa ninety-seven billion na 'yung nawala, sapat pa lang, ayun ang competition, no? From China, eighty-six point nine billion. Pag sa US naman, ang nawala naman, uh, ten billion plus. So pag inad mo 'yung dalawang, dalawang countries pa lang, eh, meron pa rin tayong trade with Japan, South Korea, and other countries. Meron pa sa European Union. So between these two countries pa lang, ninety-seven billion ang nawala na sa tax, na revenue, organ revenues na ito eh. Ayan, ayan po, gusto ko lang point out and, uh, para i-validate 'yung sinabi ni, uh, Mr. Montemayor na talagang nangyayari 'yung, uh, katako-takot 'yung nawawala sa gobyerno. Uh, not to mention na 'yung local industry natin talagang napapirwiso, hindi lang namamatay, so that, that's all, uh, Mr. Chairman, sir President.
Alright, um, so are we ready, uh, Bureau of Customs, uh, dun sa mga update na hindi ikaw niya?
Uh, Mr. President, I think we emailed, uh, the secretariat already on, uh, unupdated data. Uh, anyway, according to the legal service, all, uh, mentioned cases in the port of Subic, uh, cases have been filed against, sir. Uh, we're checking with the Pulilan Code Storage, if, uh, if a case has been filed, but there are updates, sir, that we submitted. Um, some of those that were mentioned, sir, uh, cases were filed against na, sir.
What about the blacklisted?
Sir, all the, all, all of those, sir, uh, according to our accounts management office, have already been blacklisted, sir. Uh, they're no longer transacting with the Bureau, sir.
Okay, uh, what can you say about the recommendations of, uh, Mr. Montemayor, please?
Uh, sir, uh, I was, I was talking to Commissioner Guerrero a while ago, sir. Uh, most of the recommendations, uh, are already being pursued by the Bureau of Customs. In fact, uh, on the issue of classification, sir, we follow the classification uh, in the declaration contained in the SPSIC. So 'yung SPSIC po kasi, nakalagay dun kung ano 'yung classification niya at anong klasing rice niya. At yun po 'yung sinusunod ng Bureau of Customs, kasi oh, uh, wala naman po kaming technical expertise to determine anong klasing bigas ho ito, broken ho ba ito, five percent, ten percent? So ang ina-assume po namin, kapag biligyan po, sir, um, we'll also provide the dishonorable committee, sir, with the data. Noon, ilan po dun sa mga pumasok na importation ng bigas na hindi po pumasok sa reference value at under po siya ngayon ang tentative listings, meaning po, uh, pinapost po namin ang bond, uh, and are now undergoing dispute settlement mechanisms uh, pagdating po sa port, in accordance with, uh, our valuation rules and consistent with the WTO rules and valuation. Uh, 'yung post-clearance po na ginawa namin, sir, we only did that as a matter of sampling. Nung nag-meeting po kami nila, Mr. Montemayor, at natanggit niyo niya 'tong mga items na'to. And, uh, I confirm, sir, that, uh, we have recommendations uh, on the filing of cases against, uh, some of the audities that we found discrepancy against or were not able to produce the proper documents. Now, anyway, sir, majority po nung na-audit namin, pinasara na rin po namin. Uh, hindi na rin po sila nagtatransact yun sa Bureau of Customs. Most of these, sir, are cooperatives. Uh, 'yung iba pa pong recommendation ni Mr. Montemayor, sir, uh, the Bureau's working on it. We'll, we'll be happy to coordinate again with them, uh, para po ma-update sila dun sa mga actions na ginagawa namin at kung ano pa 'yung kinakailangan naming, uh, gawin pa, as per their suggestions, sir. Thank you, sir.
Sana, um, Depcom sana may follow through. After this hearing, may follow through 'yung sinasabi niyo, coordination at saka consultation, kasi nangyayari, hearing tayo ng hearing, tapos wala namang follow through, hindi naman, hindi naman nangyayari bigos saba. Have you tried looking into the possibility na 'yung AMO, 'yung Accounts Management Office niyo, kulang sa due diligence or wala malang due diligence na ginagawa? Dun sa mga requirements na dapat isinasabit na importer? Kasi, information coming from your own personnel, ah, I will not name, uh, names anymore. Pero mukhang dito nagkukulang 'yung due diligence, so siguro, uh, obligasyon naman ang nasa taas tulad niyo, Depcom, kay Commissioner Guerrero, na tingnan, i-review, ano bang ginagawa ng Accounts Management Office talaga? Uh, in the aspect of, uh, doing, uh, due diligence, can you look into it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, kagwin po namin, tapos magre-report po kami sa inyo. Dun sa follow through, sir, that is well taken and magre-report din po kami sa mga follow-up action samples. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, and perhaps, uh, we can get an update from the Department of Justice? Dami mo kasimpasyon nito mga kaso na'to?
Sir Chairman.
Oh, sir, yeah, uh, Mr. Montemayor, go ahead.
Just, uh, just two brief comments lang po, no? Yung, yung una po, 'yung sabi niyo, binabasin niyo sa SPSIC ng BPI. Pero dun po sa description ng importer, nilalagay na po nila dun 'yung rice variety and grade, tulad nung kanina, nilagay na niya five percent eh, bakit pa niyo nilagay sa broken, no? So ninety percent po ng imports, meron tamang, meron tamang grade and variety. At dapat yun po ang pagbabasehan niyo, dahil yun ang declaration ng importer, no? And then, and then pangalawa po, gusto ko tanong 'yung BOC, bakit niyo diniscontinue 'yung reference price for ten and fifteen percent broken?
Sir, I will check on that. Ah, alam ko, sir, wala kaming diniscontinue na reference pricing. Uh, lahat po, kung meron na po kaming previous reference price na published dun, ina-update lang po yun ang Import Assessment Service, but I will get back to you on that, sir. I'll, I'll just message the director for import assessment, uh, there are valid reasons why hindi niya pinapublish yan.
Starting, starting September twenty twenty-one po, kasi I keep track of it. Salamat po.
Sabay, sir. Yeah, by the way, ano, I was disturbed by that, by those figures na 'yung type ng, type ng rice, ano? Uh, talagang obvious eh. Genius, tino mo na gumagawa eh. Uh, ang galing ho, lilipat nila para mas mababa 'yung ano, ano, 'yung dapat mataas, mababa ang valuation. Diba? Slight of hand. Abuja. Uh, anyway, totally, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. President, for the, uh, uh, update of the cases, uh, please be informed that during the first hearing, uh, the DOJ was provided with a list of cases requiring an update. And that last week before, uh, uh, the weekend, uh, the Department of Justice, uh, through our docked section, uh, sent via email the updates on the cases that were provided during the last, uh, hearing. Um, uh, to note, uh, in the list that were provided to us, uh, there are around thirty cases listed. And among the thirty cases, uh, eleven cases does not appear in the docked section of our, uh, records office. And I'll
Ano ibig sa'yo yun, sir?
Uh, it means, uh, Mr. President, uh, that, uh, we, there's no case file in the Department of Justice. Among the list in the, of cases of the, uh, that were provided to the Department of Justice, sir. Um, the thirty cases, eleven of which does not appear in our records.
So what does that mean, uh, BOC?
Your Honor, will, I, Mr. President, will coordinate with the Department of Justice on that because our legal service submitted, uh, data based on their own records. And, uh, based on our records, there should be a case filed before, uh, the Department of Justice. I'm just not sure, sir, if, uh, some of our cases are filed at the local, uh, national prosecution services. Uh, and, uh, I think Attorney Guet handles national, the national level. But we'll reconcile with DOJ, your honor, and, uh, report back to dishonorable.
Yeah, continue, Attorney, you go ahead.
Insofar as the other cases are concerned, uh, uh, for, I'll give a specific update on the status of the cases listed. There are few, um. On the importation, uh, of twelve reefer containers found in Nabota City, right now the case is submitted already for resolution, meaning the preliminary investigation and the submission of the pleadings of the respective parties are over, and we are waiting for the resolution, uh, Mr. President. As to, uh, importation from, uh, Port of Subic, July one and July six twenty twenty-one, this concerns importation of red onions. Uh, the same is already for approval of the resolution. I just don't know, because it does not appear in this matrix, whether this is dismissed or for filing. Uh, the date of inspection and seizure dated July nine and thirteen, Port of Subic again. And this is, uh, importation of onions. Uh, the same is already resolved for two one, two and resolution dated uh, January nineteen twenty twenty-two for automatic review, meaning, uh, Mr. President, this case is dismissed during PI. For importation seizure, uh, inspection seizure dated July fourteen and, uh, sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Uh, again, this is for red onions, Manila International Container Port. The same still pending preliminary investigation. Another case, uh, inspection and seizure dated July nineteen twenty twenty-one from the Port of Labao. This again is for red onions. Uh, this case is already resolved for two one two, uh, resolution dated March ten twenty twenty-two. There is a probable cause, so we filed information before the court.
Itong mga import- importer ng onions na'to? Iba-iba ang pangalan, meron puro red onions, puro onions, bakit?
Based on the submitted, uh, leisure honors, these are the subject of the importation, more on red onions. So if we like to clarify
So, ang dami nito, ang dami nila, puro red onions ang sa ini-import?
Yes, sir.
Iba-ibang company 'to?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ano meron sa red onions? Bakit ang hiring nila is smuggling yan?
Uh, maybe the Department of Justice is not in position to answer that question.
Yes.
I recommend to DA, maybe, uh.
You said, Castillo, ano, uh, ano hula mo rito?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, it might be easy to dispose of or dispose or sell uh, because there is no, uh, visual distinction between a local red onion and an important red, imported red onion, sir.
Papano 'yung food safety aspect?
Uh, the, it, the Department of Agriculture, sir, uh, looks into the food safety aspect of this importation, sir.
Yes, I see, Assistant.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, because 'yung mga importation, sir, naman na nga onions, mis-declared. So hindi, sir, kami ay nagbibigay ng issuance about, uh, import permit. Uh, usually, ang ginagamit, sir, nila is sa FDA or, uh, uh, ibang, ano, sir, because, wala ka namang, hindi naman, sir, dadaan sa amin, sir eh. Hindi naman dadaan 'yung, 'yung request niya for import permit, because hindi naman niya de-declared as onion, sir. Ang declaration niya, chapati, uh, pastry, bread, or other items, sir. So hindi talaga dadaan sa DA process, sir.
Yes, go ahead, uh, you said, Castillo.
Uh, yes. Uh, yes, Mr. President, thank you. Uh, Mr. President, this is why we need to emphasize also the importance of, um, educating everyone uh, as to how to distinguish local and imported agricultural products, sir, so that, um, number one, the public would be advised of the safety or the, the health aspect of these products. And then, number two, for the law enforcers also to, like DTI, sir, uh, we do not have a capacity to distinguish imported and local products. So if we are, uh, if there is a ready or unavailable, uh, labeling or marking on the product, it would be easier for us to be able to, uh, do something about it, Mr. President.
Yes, you should, the Department of Trade, uh, should come up with the information drive para hindi bumili rin 'yung mga kababayan natin. Ang problema, hindi niyo mat distinguish ano sinasabi niyo.
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Uh, itong ano, nagbabasa ko palang ilistahan nung red onions, naiiyak na ako eh. Hindi na kailangan magbalatas 'yung kuwitas, talupan. You, go ahead, uh, Tony, go ahead, wrap up.
Uh, just to wrap up, Your Honor, for the remaining, uh, 19 cases, uh, majority of them are pending PI. Uh, three of the cases were dismissed, two were filed in court, Your Honor. For information, and majority of the, uh, cases, the subject of importation are red onions, for information of the honorable committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
So anong bottom line natin dito sa second border na suggestion? Ano, ayaw nila, maraming may ayaw niya sa second border na 'yan. 'Yung first border, ano, I, I just received the notes from, uh, different groups, especially 'yung agap.
Uh, sir, uh, meron na, sir, tayong, uh, may proposal na, sir, si Secretary Dar na meron na, sir, tayong, uh, ano, uh, one-stop, sir, na actually, naka-proposal siya dun sa Subic, sir. Uh, na dun na, sir, ang spacing, dun na, sir, ang inspection. Uh, kaya for now, sir, meantime, na wala pa po 'yun, sir. Uh, ang palalakasin na lang po natin is 'yung second border talaga, sir. Uh, and, uh, para, sir, matanggal na rin sa remang human intervention kung meron man negotiation o ano, sir, dun sa baba, wala parati tayo dun sa area. We're proposing, sir, na magkaroon, sir, ng tablet, sir, lahat ng quarantine officer, inspection officer. In that tablet, sir, uh, real-time, sir, nagpapan, sir, sila ng inspection, sir, nila. At the same time, makipita, sir, natin kung ano 'yung binupok saan, sir, at binababa.
'Yung kasalukuyan, 'yung sa first border na tinatawag. Uh, at tapos sinabi niyo, in time dahil sa space eh, uh, may second border muna. Uh, pakie-explika niyo po sa akin 'yan na ano, ano pupuntahan ng second border?
Sir, uh, 'yun na 'yun, sir, sa identified at accredited, sir, na warehouse, sir, na pupuntahan, sir, 'yun. Uh, pero ang iba naman, sir, other than that, meron pa, sir, trabaho ng escropolis traders na idadiverge pa, sir, hindi aabot dun sa warehouse. Madadiverge pa, sir, 'yung ibang, uh, kontraband, sir. That's why, uh, 'yun nga, sir, buti, sir, binigyan tayo ng access ng DOC, re, para matrace din, sir, 'yung, 'yung, 'yung tracking, sir, kung saan pupunta 'yung mga container, paano, sir.
Would that be part of your job as a economic intelligence, uh, uh, unit or group?
Yes, sir. Uh, kami naman po, sir, is, uh, just to conduct intelligence networking, sir. Tapos, pina-furnace namin sa DOC, sir. DOC naman, sir, is immediately take action on it, sir. Kaya mabilis, sir, 'yung ano, but hindi pa po ideal, sir eh. Uh, it would be ideal ma kung meron na, sir, talagang uh, ma-institutionalize, sir, 'yung position, sir, natin sa subtasks on economic intelligence. Kasi, sir, ngayon, kaya lang tayo effective is because of the inter-agency cooperation between STGEI and DOC, sir. Kaya, sir, tayo nakaka-score, sir.
Anyway.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, Mr. Tony, yes, go ahead.
Uh, alam mo, I'm telling you, diwa, I mean, your solutions. You know, if we're gonna rely on your solutions, uh, why don't you be humble and ask the private sector what the solutions are? We know the solutions, we know it more than you. But the problem is you don't talk to us, eh, no? And when you talk to us, you ignore us, eh. That, that's why we're like this, an example. I already told you example. You know, there're these carrots in Batangas, you're gonna look for safety, for God's sake. Use common sense, right? If you talk to us, we'll tell you what common sense is. Those who imported those carrots, we know who they are, just move on them. No, but you're gonna go, go into food safety, which will take a long time. You, you know, and you talk about space. You know what the private sector suggested, right? You don't need space. Senator Laxton said it, get more people. You know what they said? We don't have budget for that. Okay, you don't have budget, so the people suffer. What I'm saying, sir, is that we cannot rely anymore on these solutions you're talking about because they've not been working, correct? So you gotta get the private sector to come in, but you will ignore us. So you don't ignore us, we need people like Senator Soto to put his perfect power onto this and then monitoring. For example, I'm gonna give you a challenge right now. These cars in Batay, what're gonna do about it? Look for food, food security, food safety, good luck. In the meantime, I'm challenging you right now, I'm challenging you. Go to the people who brought the cars, that's easy, they ask them to buy it, right? And go to their names and find them, okay? Let's see what you're gonna say in one month. If in one month you say, you still think about it, for God's sake, that's what we hear all the time, Mr. Montemayor. He said that three, three years ago. Now you're gonna look at it. Why didn't you look at it three years ago? Because you're not humble. You should look at the private sector and look at them as friends, not as enemies. But I'll tell you what, we are your enemies because some of you are killing the farmers. And if you follow us, you won't make money anymore, and the farmers will live. So you're getting them die because you want to have luxury. And I'm telling you the truth, right? That's why you need people like Senator Soto, uh, you, you know, uh, the Senate President and Sir Laxan, Laxton, who I think is the best guy in the whole country to fight corruption, to take our cudgels. But as long as you wait for Senate hearings and dribble the ball like this, we'll not get anywhere. No, for example, Guerrero is good, he made a lot of, uh, improvements. But kulang, kulang na kulang. For example, these things, space, are you kidding? Private sector said you don't need space, just get more people to look at it. And you know I know this because I've been in it. I've been inspecting myself, correct? Okay, and you know, like, I'm just saying this, rice. Mister Deputy Assistant Commissioner, you're my best friend, one of yours ago, and all of a sudden you don't answer my calls. You know why? You cannot face me. Because you told me to support me to get agriculture, the same privileges industry, okay? And they're not getting it, so I think it's embarrassing to talk to me because you are for me. But the people above you turned it down, right? Turned it down, right? So of course you have to follow them. I'm just saying, sir, that we need people like Senator Soto and Senator Laxton to take on the cudgels and get them calm and be humble and don't just look at your own solutions, ask us for solutions. We know how to do it, maybe more than you, correct? Like this idea of cut, for God's sake, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, I will take up your
Mr. Chairman.
As a matter of fact, I already gave instructions. Uh, kung ano sinasabi ninyo, eh, hindi kayo pakihinggan. Uh, kami makikinig sa inyo. I'm setting up a meeting with the private sector. You give us the solutions that you're talking about and we will be the ones to talk to them about it, no? Uh, kasi dun, go ahead.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Bali, nandyan naman 'yung batas eh, uh, 'yung first border, no? Uh, dapat implement lang na nasabi naman ng ano, uh, ng DA, kung lumabas 'yan, mahihirapan sila. So dapat sundan 'yung batas, no? And, uh, nasa batas naman na silang nauuna. Uh, dapat mag-inspect. Tsaka, tsaka dapat implement nila. By the way, 'yung sa, sa Nabotas pala, no? Uh, nag-usap kami ni Mayor Tobichanko kasama ni Amy Marcos sa, sa, nun pupunta kami ng consul ng, uh, Ambassador ng China just, uh, 10 days ago. Uh, sinabi ni Mayor Tobichanko na may finay pala silang kaso dun sa, about 'yung isda, no? Na nakakulong na 'yung ano, uh, economic sabotage. 'Yung isa naman, uh, Bali, ano eh, Bali 'yung Nabotas yata nag-file, no? Uh, may kaso rin 'yung isa pero lumipad sa China. So dalawang case daw ang na economic sabotage na 'yung isa nakakulong na. 'Yun ang sabi. Ah, 'yun lang, uh, Chair.
Okay. We will, um, we will suspend the hearing and, um, will inform you of a possible, uh, uh, next hearing after we consult with the private sector that's, uh, being requested by some. Yes, uh, Chester?
Yes, uh, clarification lang, uh, Mr. Senate President. Uh, it's not that na ayaw natin 'yung second border. Uh, maganda po, meron pa ring se, meron tayong second border, but napaka-importante po na magkaroon tayo ng first border dahil po 'yung pinapaliwanag po kanina ni Asek. Tama po, nache-check lang po 'yung second border sa cold storages na and warehouses. Mr. Chair, uh, para po ano, in layman sa explanation, mabilis po intindihan. For example po, nasa stadium po tayo o kolyseum, iilan lang po 'yung exit niya, 'yung patawag na first border. So 'yung manpower ko, konti lang po gamitin. Once nakalabas na po lahat ng tao o container band dun sa ano, sa first border, ang hirap na po kung sana natin hanapin 'yung mga ano, nakalabas na second border, nagpunta sa bahay nila or anything, hindi po natin basta-basta masusundan po 'yun. So 'yun lang po ang paliwanag dun, bakit gusto natin isulong 'yung, uh, first border? Makakatulong 'yung second border, but importante po 'yung first border. Thank you po, Mr. Chair, Senate President.
Alright, just to wrap up, along, um, in today's hearing, we have, uh, at least somehow, um, established the following. To solve this smuggling, there must be an inter-agency cooperation. However, while this has been being done, it seems that inter-agency efforts, uh, resulted to pinpointing so aptly worthed by Senator Ping as a ping pong strategy. So all the concerned agencies should have the authority and capacity to act expediently and effectively. Kung kinikelaan po eh, lahat sana, lahat sila may kapangyarihan na kumpis kahin agad-agad ang mga lagahanap na kontrabando. Kontrabando nating tatawagin 'yun dapat eh. Uh, sa ganun parang, mabilis natin matutulungan 'yung mga nanghihinang, nanghihingalo na mga magsasaka. Uh, since the inter-agency cooperation is necessary, at the Department of Health, who has been missing in action, may mga hindi alam na DO8 sa nakakakanser 'yung mga imported na gulay na galing sa China dahil to sa formal de-hate. Eh, mamaya, ito naman ang pasukan ng pandemya. 'Yung wake up na 'yan, ano? So begin, we will call their attention to this. As earlier pointed out by, uh, by this representation, uh, some cases have not been filed. Now, we'll, we'll expect an update on the overall, no? Uh, in the next hearing. Hindi pwedeng papagpintangan tayo o mapagpintang kayo na selective ang cases eh kasi may mga naopay, pero hindi, meron luma, may bago. So we want a complete update, ano, uh, the next time around. We have numerous laws in place. What is needed is full implementation of the laws. This body has been doing that, ano, sa atin, sana. Uh, we have been expecting that it should be done that way. More to protect our farmers, what is happening, our agriculture. Sana naman, bagay wake up po lito sa mga concerned agencies pero alam din natin kasi nasa likod ng karabihan dito. Pera-pera na pa nun eh, 'yun ang nakakainis eh. Ah, while we cannot see the extensive and significant efforts exerted by it, the different agencies, sana naman, we will, uh, magbago na. We will not end these investigations and exercise our right of oversight until we finally put an end to this financial problem. So we will suspend the hearing and, um, expect an update next time around. But, uh, we will talk to the private sector for their proposed, uh, for their proposed solutions. Thank you, uh, to all our persons and our colleagues who have joined us today. Says, the hearing is suspended.